Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this city council meeting, regular city council meeting on January 28, 2025 at 6:30 to order. If you would please bow your heads or take a moment of silence for me. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate you all being here this evening. City Clerk, individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on cause our judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either their first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issues, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a signed to city council shall be placed in the box on the table. Thank you, City Clerk. City Attorney, do we have a call?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dillon, would you be so kind to make the motion?
Move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting on December 10, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. I have one administrative change to the agenda. We will table item 9A, which is SSA 7, 2024, 800 Lane Avenue. The public hearing will be 11 February 2025. The first reading for that will be this evening.
Thank you very much.
Yes, could we have a table to motion to that date and time, please?
Yes. Move to table the small-scale account plan amendment, 800 Lane Avenue to February 11.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Onto item 5A, which is Employees of the Month for December 2024 and January 25. So from the Fire Department, it's Kyle Mack, and Chief Assolis will be the presenter.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I present this award to him, a brief background as to the significance of what this is. So with the increase of development that we've seen over the past few years, obviously, we've had to address that with our prevention team. So that workload's gone up because of that development. And what we've done to offset that is we've taken some of our combat firefighters and cross-trained them into prevention. So this is where Kyle Mack became integral in that training. It was four individuals who we pulled over from our combat side to do this prevention, and Kyle dedicated an enormous amount of time and effort to get these people up to snuff so that they could be, so that we could send them out to do inspections as well. So I would like you, I would like to read to you what the nomination was by the person who nominated it. So Kyle taught each one of us, and this was from one of those individuals who was cross-trained, Kyle taught each one of us what to look for during commercial and high-rise inspections. He is always willing to help us out when we need to learn, lean on, or get an answer on fire alarms, pumps, and 911 calls. He actually shows up on fire alarms and even structured fire calls and is ready to help out any crew on scene. So that's not typical for an inspector to show up on, on a actual structured fire. He's always there whenever he is called or we ask upon him, and he genuinely, genuinely wants to help. And he receives no extra incentive for this at all. He does it just because he wants to see these individuals do great. So Kyle, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. And for the month of January, it's John Monroe. And Larry, I think you're going to do the presentation?
Good evening. My name is Larry Lad. I'm the Public Works Manager, too, for Water Reclamation. I manage both the wastewater treatment plants. All I can say is, I'll read the last line. I'm not going to read the whole thing. It was nominated by one of our operators. John is a superstar. Without him, the plants are not going to be running the way they need to be. It's real simple. We inherited an old system, both these plants. And without the work that this man does on the weekends, everything, he does, if he gets called out on something, he comes out and he takes care of it. Before he leaves, he checks the whole plant, makes sure everything is good. He's a superstar. He came in as a maintenance mechanic apprentice, and he's already now going to be a utility maintenance chief. So, you know, he is everything that he was nominated to be. We're proud to have him. I'm also going to brag on one other thing. I've had two of the last four Employee of the Months out of water reclamation, so I'm very proud of that. So I'm going to brag a little bit, but John, appreciate it.
Mr. City Manager?
Next item is item B, which is Utility Billing Presentation by our Customer Service Manager. Carrie, come on up.
Hi, sorry. I'm Carrie. I'm the Customer Service Manager. And this is Carla. She's the Utility Billing Coordinator. So we're here just to do a little presentation on the way that utility billing works, okay? ... billing cycle number. There are four cycles. A selection of meters from a cycle is downloaded to our Public Works Field Operations Department on Fridays and read the following week. The reads are uploaded daily to allow Customer Service to look for errors or discrepancies. Once accounts have been reviewed and any issues resolved, the billing file will be generated. Utility bills are generated every Wednesday except for months with five billing weeks. The billing file is sent to our print vendor on Wednesday morning. The invoices are created by the vendor and then approved by Customer Service for mailing. The invoices are mailed out the following day. The day we generate the bill to the due date is 19 days. Invoices are available online through Invoice Cloud or through the City of Titusville portal, usually by noon on the day of billing. Paperless customers receive their e-bill approximately two days after the billing date. Most mail invoices reach our customers no later than the Monday after we bill, still giving the customer two weeks to pay. Customer invoices are due once per month. The due date is based on their cycle. For example, if the invoice is cycle 94, the due date will consistently be the first Monday of the month. Online Bank Direct, OBD, is now available to customers without the worry of an actual check being mailed and not knowing when we receive it. Previously, when customers would pay through their bank's automated bill pay, the bank would forward the payment to a processing center, and then the processor would cut a check and mail it to the city. This process can take 10 to 14 days before the city receives the check. Now with the upgraded feature, once the customer pays through their bank, the payment is processed electronically, and only takes two to three business days to post with the city. The best news is there is no cost from the City of Titusville for the service.
Well, I'll kick it off with a question. Thank you for that. How many paper invoices are we mailing out versus how many are paying electronically?
Well, we mail out weekly, so I don't have the exact numbers. I apologize. But I do know that there's a definite increase in the e-billing. I would say probably about 33% of our customers go through e-billing.
Okay. So still, the vast majority are still paper invoice?
Yeah, they, they are, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. Member Nelson?
So the online bill pay, is the customer notified that the, they can look at the bill online on this date? Do we, do we get some kind of notice?
Like we said, it's normally around noon, the day of billing, that it is available for them to be able to see online. And then if they do utilize that OBD, the Online Bank Direct, where they pay through their own banking facility online, then we can now electronically get those payments within two to three days. So it will really help a lot with getting the payments quicker.
That would, that's great. Are there any limits to, you know, I have, this bank isn't included, or that bank isn't included? Is it all banks?
It's most of the major banking facilities that, you know, offer it. And there are a lot of the credit unions as well. There's, I'm sure there, there are some out there that do not offer it, but most of them do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Stokoe?
Yes, thank you. Great presentation. I have a few questions. So with the online banking option that we're changing over to, that will be processed in two to three days. If they pay online via, like, the portal, is that processed the same day?
If they pay through our payment processing provider, which is Invoice Cloud, then it hits immediately.
Okay.
And it processes the same day.
There is a fee for that, but that is not us collecting that fee. That is passed on to the vendor that's using that, who we're using that service through?
Correct. And there is a fee for the Online Bank Direct as well, but not for the customers. The city absorbs that fee. It's 25 cents per transaction, and the city absorbs that fee for the customers.
Okay. And then, I think recently, too, we just had a change in the fee for our system, and I think the rates actually went down a little bit. Is that correct?
Correct. It's now a percentage instead of a flat fee. And with that flat fee, you are only able to pay up to $300, and then you would have to make another totally separate payment if it was over 300 and get that same flat fee. Now, it's a percentage of the bill.
Okay. And thank you for that, because I did have some citizens reach out about that, saying that they would have to make two payments. So I appreciate that. If somebody were to pay late, is the late fee $5?
Correct.
Okay. And if you guys process on the same day, so say a payment is due on Saturday, for instance, and we're not open on Saturdays, the mail comes on Saturday, and you guys open it on Monday, is that person considered late?
So bills are usually due, almost always due on a Monday unless it's a holiday.
Okay.
And we do not assess late fees or even send out the notices, the delinquency notices, until that following Thursday. So it even gives people even more days to pay.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, is that potentially Monday through Thursday a grace period?
Correct.
Okay. That was one of my other questions, so, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmembers? Any action you guys want to take? All right. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. If Council would be so inclined to entertain the chair, I would ask that we move item number 14, which is Mayor and Council Reports, followed by item number 16, City Attorney Reports, followed by item number 12, which is New Business, to up front. Mayor and Council? Yep, 14, 16, 12. 16 being the County Attorney's Report, which we did not get to at the end of last meeting. Feel appropriate that we get it accomplished this meeting.
This, this is going to be my, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I didn't get recognized.
Member Nelson?
Thank you.
I can't make the motion. That's why I'm asking.
So I would like to do the, I think, the boards. And then, before we do petitions or requests, I would make the motion to move 14, 16, and 12 up.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. I appreciate you guys indulging me. All right. Well, on to item number 14, which is Mayor Report. I'm sorry, did you say 14?
So what I was saying was do the boards and commissions and then do...
My apologies. I misheard you. Yeah. Gotcha. Thank you.
I heard, wait, can I clear? I heard boards and then 14, 16, and 12, then petitions. Is that correct? Okay.
Is that what you have, City Attorney?
Okay.
Okay. I apologize. I misheard it in my brain. I was a little bit in my paper. Well, I misspoke. We are on item number six.
Onto item 6A, which is the Historic Preservation Board. The presenter will be Ms. Shifalo.
Good evening. It hardly seems like it's been six months since I got to stand before you to present the semi-annual report for the, your Historic Preservation Board. We researched and discussed the documentation of the Florida East Coast Railroad Station over here in Titusville that is still in use by the FEC, and we decided to do nothing further because the FEC does not wish to cooperate, and they have extensively remodeled the building with no reference to historic accuracy, and they continue to use the building for purposes other than its historic nature as a train station. Our gem of a board member historian, Roz Foster, has thoroughly documented and recorded the structure and its history and suggests that this is enough for historic purposes. The importance of documenting and designating historic Titusville structures was brought into focus with the sharp criticism the Historic Preservation Board received from the public when the theater painted their historic, but not designated, theater building the historic inaccurate colors of deep blue and orange. Because the owners choose to not designate or recognize the historic value of their building, the Historic Preservation Board can exercise no authority over their choices. Thus, Mr. Heron's Theater has become known in the popular vernacular as "that big blue whale downtown." The Historic Preservation Board received the much anticipated draft of the Joinerville and Beyond Report, and we made a few revisions. And then we sent it on down to the State Florida Division of Historical Resources to complete the grant. And we were extremely pleased with the final report. We initially printed 50 copies, but popular demand required an additional 50 copies so that participants in the study and the report could be recipients of, of the final report. So we spread those throughout the community. And the Joinerville and Beyond Report is on the City of Titusville website, so it is accessible to anyone in the public. We reviewed the Educational Future Recommendation from the Joinerville Report to formulate a plan of action to create a recognizable and consistent design and branding to highlight historic African-American heritage sites, events, and resources in the former Joinerville community and the City of Titusville. Community participants in this project recommended memorialization by signage, plaques, and other means of demarcation, not only around the areas where historic structures had stood before urban renewal, but in a public area on South Street, the historic heart of the Joinerville Business District. And the city even donated a small piece of land along South Street, however funding for creating a Joinerville Gateway Pocket Park. Fell through with HUDD. So the citizens are seeking other venues, including a Joinerville Business Memorial Wall on private property. So we're going to explore how that could possibly be. They, they really want to recognize and designate where the historic storefronts were. I want especially to know where the old, old man's store was that had the pet alligator all the kids came to pet. So I personally, as a resident owner of a historic home in the neighborhood, would like to see the city work with the citizens and the Historic Preservation Board to make this Joinerville Gateway Project complete. Either the wall or let's finish that little, we're not going to call it a park. We're going to call it Joinerville Gateway. So with an eye to the future, the Historic Preservation Board has created a plan to recognize historic structures in Titusville without formal designation. And this will be a feature of our annual workshop in the National Historic Preservation Month of May 2025. And I'd like to invite you all now to come to that workshop. It's going to be quite interesting as we recognize structures without going through the formal designation, in the hopes that we can instill pride and interest in rehabbing and reusing older structures in the city. You know, a lot of good things could come of that. So thank you very much for accepting this report from us, and thank you very much for allowing your Historic Preservation Board to do fantastic and wonderful things for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shifalo. City Manager?
Onto 6B, which is the Planning and Zoning Commission's semi-annual report. It's included in your agenda packet. No action is required. Onto item 6C, which is the Planning and Zoning Commission. The terms of regular members, Danny Aton and Joseph Richardson, and one alternate, Michael Feldner, expire on January 31, 2025. Regular members, Aton has expressed his willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board as a regular member for two-year term, to expire on January 31, 2027. Mr. Richardson has advised that he does not wish to be reappointed. Alternate member Michael Feldner has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this board as a regular member. However, if he is not appointed as a regular member, he would like to continue to serve as an alternate and would need to be reappointed to a two-year term to expire on January 31, 2027. Alternate member John Rogers has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this board as a regular member. However, if he is not appointed as a regular member, he would like to continue serving as an alternate member and does not need to be reappointed at this time. In addition, there are five applications on file for your consideration. James Troutman, Stuart Buchanan, Mike Scully, Jane Gellen, and Robert Walters, who is appointed to the Titusville Environmental Commission as a regular member with a term to expire on 11/30/2027. Mr. Walter has expressed his desire to serve on both the TEC and the PNZ. There is two additional applicants that staff contacted to confirm their desire to be appointed to the PNZ and has had no response. The applicants are Benita Diaz-Gallo and Anne Marie Seidner. In addition, we received a application today, and because the application is late, if Council would like to consider that application, you'll have to vote to do so. And we have the application on file.
All righty. Member Moscoso?
Actually, Anne Marie is here. From my understanding, she actually does want to keep her resume on file, correct? She wants to be, she wasn't on the list. She wants to be considered. My other question would be, for this, is it possible if we follow Robert's Rules of Order, where we do nominations, not making the motions? I think it'll make it a smoother process. And so how that would go is, I would say, I nominate this person, I nominate this person, and then we do a roll call vote.
Okay. City Attorney?
Yes, sir. That, that's the way that the city has done in the past. Under Robert's rules, we haven't adopted a policy on how to do it. And when you haven't, they recommend you open the nominations, make nominations, they're ready to close nominations, and then vote. Now, if you want to do that a position at a time, like you did last time, I think that, that would be efficient. But you certainly could take nominations for each opening that is available, and then close those nominations and vote.
Any other council discussion? Member Nelson?
Other than, I'd like to hear from the nominees first.
I'm going to leave it up to Council, but I'm going to ask, do you want to call cards first, or have the people speak on their behalf first?
I would prefer to have the people speak first, and let us get a chance to know something about them.
Okay. I'm good with that.
And if I could, we have that one application we received today. If you'd like to consider that, you'll have to vote to bring it up.
So the question before us now is, do we consider this late application? Member Moscoso?
Yes. I mean, I would love to see the application.
Second. So I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so Wanda has the application. We'll pass the hard copy out to you.
Mayor, do we know if the person's here?
I do not know. I don't even know the name. Un momento. Yes, I guess the person's here. All right. Here you go. Oh. Oh. Oh, you got an extra one. Thank you. All right, so in accordance with council's wishes, I'm going to call folks up, if you don't mind if you're here, just to kind of tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to either serve or continue serving, and I'm just going to go in the order in which they're listed on my packet here. Mr. Dan Aton.
Thank you. Dan Aton, I've been a resident of Titusville since '73, moved away, and then been back for about 20 years, own a local business here, own a couple, three pieces of property, and have enjoyed my last term on planning and zoning and eager to serve again. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dan. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Fedler? Did I say that right? Mr. Fedler, Michael Fedler? Not here. John Rogers Jr.? How you doing, sir?
Hello. I'll try to be brief, which I typically am not on PNZ, if you've followed any of the meetings, although there is one more grievous offender than I. I was looking at, I was actually looking at my phone, some old text messages from Jane Spideau, who was the PNZ chairman for a number of years, and it was she, I worked with her at Titusville High, and who requested that I consider joining because we talked at lunch, sometimes at school, and we seemed to have a lot of the same thoughts about things and, you know, the city and development. I have to say, I kind of didn't expect to stay on as long as I have, especially because the first agenda packet was 600 pages. I thought, what have I gotten myself into? There has been a steep learning curve, but I feel like I've climbed the hill about halfway, and, you know, I've still got a lot more to learn, but I've had some really wonderful people to work with, and I would like to continue to work with them. And I simply will say that I think the work that we do is important, and I hope and I believe that it's listened to on the council, and I would like to become a regular member, but I would certainly be happy to be an alternate member if that's not available. Questions?
Thank you very much for your service on PNZ thus far, and I appreciate coming here and speaking tonight, so thank you. I don't see any questions from council, so you're good. Stuart Buchanan.
Mayor and City Council, good evening. My name is Stuart Buchanan, I'm a Titusville resident. I was born here. My family, now with my son, I believe we're the fourth generation here. I'm not sure if Laura Lee is here tonight. She actually has me beat by one generation. I have both my undergraduate and graduate degrees from University of Central Florida. I started my government service in the Planning Department in 1993 with the City of Cocoa. I was appointed city planner in 1995 at the age of 25. At the time, I was the youngest city planner in the state of Florida in what's called FAPZ. I worked 24 years, both for city and county planning, as a city planner, senior planner, and planning director. When I was with Brevard County, I was qualified by the County Attorney's Office, County Attorney Eden Bentley specifically, to be the county's expert witness in the areas of zoning and land use. I would represent the county at administrative hearings and at depositions. I was born and raised in this community, and I'm trying to think of the easiest way to put this in layman's terms for the residents of the city of Titusville. If Brad was to retire and apply to be on your planning and zoning board is the best analogy I could give. I asked that several of you check my references, I know some of you did, and if any of you would have the opportunity to share that, I would appreciate it. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. Any questions? Thank you. Benita Diaz-Gallo. Not here. Gotcha. Ms. Janay Jell.
Good evening. Well, you know my name. You guys have my applicant packet. I'll be honest with you, I'm a little nervous. I had a whole speech ready, but I said, you know what, I'm just going to speak from the heart. So first and foremost, to those who are watching and those who are listening, those who are sitting in the audience, my charge to you is this: If you have a heart for this city, like so many of us have, do something about it. These boards are volunteer, they're not paid positions, they require time, patience, teamwork and collaboration, engagement with the community, they require a lot of things. So I encourage you, if you have a heart for your community, or for your church, or for your city, definitely, definitely try to get on some of these boards. So, I was born and raised here in Titusville, Florida, went to Titusville High School, I know a couple of you there. I know my family is watching online, and as you can see, I have my two beautiful children with me. So why do I want to serve on this board? Why do I want to serve on any board? On my application, I put a couple of different boards, and for the most part, I grew up here. I've seen this city grow, I've seen this city lose, I've seen this city, you know, be in pain, and I've seen it also be in goodness. I want to be able to contribute that. So I ask that you all consider my application, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Janay. John Scully. And I'll help you out, the city manager, I think, referred to you as Mike Scully.
That's right. Good evening, council. My name is John Scully, and I'm honored to be considered for the Planning and Zoning Commission. As someone also born and raised in Titusville, I have a deep connection to the city, as well as a strong desire to see the city continue to grow responsibly. I'm committed to bring a thoughtful and fair perspective to this role, to help shape the future of our city that we all care so deeply about. If you have any questions or comments, I'm happy to address them, and thank you for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Scully. Oh, hold on, Member Nelson has something for you.
I understand you interned with Planning and Zoning.
That is correct.
Planning Department?
Yes, ma'am.
What'd you think? How long were you here?
I was just here for a summer internship. I actually was under Brad for a little while. It was a good experience, I learned a lot. I know that's not as much information at all, what I'll need to know for this role if appointed, but it definitely gave me a good insight of what city government looks like and what planning looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Anne Marie Snyder.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Anne Marie Seidler. I am a full-time resident as of 2016. I'm a mother of four, and my friend told me to say this, I've been planning and zoning my whole life. There are four girls, so here I am. Thank you for considering me, for even being on in this position. Planning and zoning is, going through some changes. We have a lot going on in the city, a lot of good things going on, and I would really like to be a part of it. I originally started out in Oregon with a Bachelor's of Science in Nursing. I have a Master's Degree in Business Administration with Professional Project Management. So since being here, I have worked in the construction industry, general contracting, as well as heavy machinery. So I do warehouse, blueprints, the schematics. I have never served on a planning and zoning commission, but with project management, the process is similar. So I feel like I could contribute, at least some good ideas, and I hope and thank you for considering me to be a part of your team.
Thank you very much, and I'm sorry I mispronounced your name, it's Snyder, right?
Seidler.
Seidler, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It was a bunch of small letters compiled together on my notes, so, thank you. Any questions? Oh, Member Muskoso.
I think you failed to mention that you also have a black belt.
Yes.
Which, you're serving on an all-male board, could be helpful.
Yes, I have a black belt in Korea, Taekwondo, yes. I haven't had to use it recently. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. James Troutman.
Hello, Mayor, council members. My name is James Troutman. I currently reside here in Titusville as of two years ago. For the past 10, 11 years, I've honed my skills as a quality inspector, ultimately leading to defining role as a quality manager with one of the largest inspection companies in the world. While honing that skill with that position, I've pretty much had the privilege in managing the training, testing, and certification of over 200 inspectors. This experience not only highlights my leadership abilities, but also my commitment to high standards and ensuring rigorous compliance with industry regulations. One of my key responsibilities has been, when I moved here to work for SpaceX, helping and providing certifications and inspections, providing the procedures and everything that are required to do those inspections with. Currently, I'm employed with Blue, and that is where I have continued my, honing my skills, dealing with government codes, dealing with relating to inspections, so anything about above-ground storage tanks, things of that nature, that's my background, welding inspections. My professional journey has involved an extensive focus on reading and understanding government codes and specifications related to my field. This familiarity with regulatory frameworks and compliance standards has provided me with a solid foundation to effectively contribute to the planning and zoning initiatives in Titusville. I am confident that my ability to interpret and apply these codes ensure that our community growth aligns with the established guidelines and visions. I'm passionate about the future of Titusville and believe that thoughtful, strategic planning and zoning are essential to fostering sustainable development and enhancing the quality of life for all residents. My background and skills make me well-equipped to contribute meaningfully to this endeavor. I'm eager to bring my expertise, attention to detail, and dedication to the Planning and Zoning Committee. I'm committed to serving our community with the same level of excellence, transparency that has defined my professional career, and thank you for your consideration for my application.
Thank you, Mr. James. Any questions? I don't see any. Thank you. Robert Walter.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Robert Walter. I've been a resident of the city of Titusville since 2001. I came down from up north where I served as, I was on the Planning and Zoning Board up there for a period of four years, also a code enforcement officer. I came to Titusville because that's where my family is, and it's, I like the hometown feeling, but I, what I want to do is hold developers and contractors to a high standard that Titusville deserves. You know, I fought Wendy's up north and made Wendy's not go away, but build a new building that matched the neighborhood, you know, not throw a box store up in the middle of downtown. So I look forward to continuing serving in the City of Titusville, and would like to be considered for a full-time member or alternate.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Any questions? I don't see any. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Member Muskoso.
Sorry, you also serve on the TEC, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And last but not least, sorry, Mr. Johnson, your application was just handed to me, that's why you're at the bottom of the page, but I believe you are up next. Is that who it is? Robert Johnson?
Stan Johnston. I don't think I'm going to, I don't think I'm going to be selected for this because I'm against high rises and I'm against, I believe it's going to, it's quality of life. And I say something else that is very offensive to some people, and I say that water flows downhill in the city of Titusville, planning and zoning, and our council is denying this fact that water flows downhill in their passing of ordinances and making decisions. For example, if you go to I-95 and you look at the huge culverts, box culverts there, you will see that very little water passes through there. The question is why? Because the city of Titusville is not recognizing their stormwater master plan, and they haven't done it for over 53 years. That's illegal. Now, that is, I can show you a number of dams in the city of Titusville that are completely illegal, that in fact, they, what do they do? They take private property without due process of law. It's ridiculous, and yet the city continues to allow this. So I have special references, like for example, Mr. Scott Ellis. Well, let's say Sean Williams. Sean Williams, who served on the PNZ for 18 years, and Scott Ellis, who was a former clerk of the court, and who was, who exposed the corruption of his former clerk of court, and that is Mitch Needleman. So as you know, is that, for me, as I'm going to cut it real short right here, is that you probably don't want me because I'm critical of the violations of law that the city of Titusville is doing. So thank you if you consider mine, but you've got some good applicants here. I'm sorry to see Mr. Richardson leaving. He's a good man, very good man, thank you, an honest man.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions? City Clerk, are there any cards?
Yes, sir, we have two additional cards. Tony Shifalo.
Shifalo, Tropic Street. While you have many good new applicants, I must admit, Ms. Stokel, that the recent going out and snatching people up to come and all of a sudden serve on boards, I would like to say to a lot of these new people in the room, though, you're asking for something you don't know what you're getting into. You haven't been at city council meetings, you haven't been coming to planning and zoning, you have never shown up that I know of at TEC, and I know you don't come to the Historic Preservation Board, nobody does, that's why we get so much work done. However, at this time, with Ms. Muskoso not being on that board anymore, and now Mr. Richardson stepping down, it's a dangerous time to be putting brand-new people who don't have a clue about what they're getting into on that board, or to put someone like Mr., I'm going to call him by name, Mr. Buchanan, who when you read his resume, yes, he's got all these things, but what horrible detrimental things. In Palm Bay, he was in charge of community development, and he recruited developers and builders so that they could double their commercial area. His business, innovative zoning solutions, was to procure high-density condominiums in mixed-use areas across the state, not just in one little town. Then his work at the city of Daytona and South Daytona Beach, where, South Daytona, where he was in charge of the development, I might add, the overdevelopment and rather boring, because now it's like US1, any city USA, Beaufort Highway, Atlanta, Georgia, I feel the same way on both of those places, same, what kind of development is that? Anyway, there are so many other good candidates that were proposed, but I would suggest, seeing what happened with TEC, when you put two new people on that board, one of whom is sitting in this room now, wanting to take on a whole other job, when they sat up here on these seats, and they were like deer in the headlights, what in the heck is happening here? It's a big job to be on an advisory board. They get, like you, hundreds of pages in their monthly, for them, bi-monthly agenda packets. It takes me all day to go through it, and I don't have to worry about... It takes me all day to go through it, and I don't have to worry about children are going to work or making a living. I'd just be poor. So I would like to say, at this time, I would recommend that you keep Danny and you put the alternate Michael up, or even Mr. Rogers, and keep that board without brand-new people, especially two new people, to have to try and function, because there's a lot of critical things happening in this town right now. We're trying to revise our comp plan, and we're getting ready for the West Titusville overlay, so that's my recommendation.
The last card is Kathleen O'Rourke.
Dr. Kathleen O'Rourke, Titusville resident. Before I address my key point, I would like to respond to Andrew Connor's statement that although we can say anything we like about him, we should not disparage citizens who offer to serve on boards, really. People on boards are representatives of the citizens, have great influence on discussions that impact the citizens, and the responsibility of the citizens to make sure we have qualified people. As I said last time, you didn't do your due diligence, as you didn't request background checks of applications, and so that unfortunately has fallen to the public. So, on to planning and zoning. I would like to point one thing out, is that every current member of this board is a man. Interesting, isn't it? Now, there could be bias. It just could be limited applicants who are women or just chance, but this gender disparity is actually really quite concerning. So fortunately, in my mind, the most highly qualified applicant is a woman, Anne Marie Seidler. And I would strongly recommend that you assign her to the P&amp;Z board, and also explore ways to encourage more women candidates to apply. I don't know all of them as well, but I will say I was quite impressed with James Troutman, who not only has excellent experience working for Blue Origin, but he's been intending the P&amp;Z boards to learn more about it. I think that kind of initiative is impressive. And just to state again, my strong concern about Stuart Buchanan, who right now has a blacked-out residence information, but we do know he was a prior resident of Leavenworth Prison for the theft of $18,000 of military items, including weapons when he was in the Army. More recently, and I presented that the last week, he was involved in a bribery case in 2020 in Daytona Beach. And his role in 2024 as the treasurer of Bivard First Political Action Committee, he was accused of spreading deceptive information regarding the right to clean water and former mayoral candidate Vicki Conklin. As I mentioned the last meeting, the file and nasty videos produced by his PAC were so full of blatant lies with a total disregard for truth or facts. If you would do a more complete job performing background checks, then citizens like myself would not have to bring this up.
Thank you. Any other cards? Thank you very much. Member Nelson.
How did you know that?
I saw you pushing the button.
I thought you read my mind. I have to agree with Tony. I would like to keep Danny Aitken on the board. And typically, we move up one of the alternates to become a regular member. So that would either be John Rogers or Mike Finler. John has been there longer, so I think it would be more appropriate to put John up and keep Mike as an alternate. Mike is also working in aerospace, and he's apparently spending a lot of time in, I think, Denver. So I think that would make it easier. I understand he has been making the meetings. For, but for the second alternate, that's sort of a problem. We have some really good candidates. I will tell you, John Scully, I really like. I like Janay, Janay. You're great. I like Anne Marie wherever she went. Actually, I don't think we could go wrong with any of them, but I think there is a point to having a woman on a board. And right now, it's a totally male-dominated board. So I'm going to suggest that as an alternate, we appoint Anne Marie Seidler. Those are my thoughts. And I'd like to say, I did try, talked to Mr. Buchanan's references, and they said nice things about him. Like I told him, he's just got some baggage there that causes a problem. But they did say very nice things about it.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Stokel.
Yep. First off, I want to say thank you to all the applicants, having been on this board, going on my ninth year now. I know, Member Nelson's, we got elected around the same time. It's nice to see so many people applying and wanting to serve on the board. And I said this last meeting, and I continue to say this every time we do appointments, my vision for when we appoint members and what I'm looking for is, this is an advisory board. I want a diverse board in terms of their background, their viewpoints, and what, how they would look at the potential issues that come before us. I don't want a board that always agrees. I want a board that can critically think and potentially think of issues that we may neglect potentially. So that's my mindset. And as I was going through the applications and then hearing everybody, a few things stood out to me. One, Dan has been involved in the community for a long time. He's served on the board. I think he does a good job on the board, so I would like to see him stay in there. Stu has been involved heavily in the community. You look at his resume, it's full of, he knows planning and zoning, truly knows planning and zoning. Like Member Nelson, I called his references. They had great things to say about him. It's unfortunate to hear comments about some of his other personal things that are getting brought up. I don't know to that extent of what that is. Again, I'm trying to look at, who do I think would bring good knowledge and expertise and vision for the city? So it was nice to see that experience. Both Janay and John, I'm a little biased toward, I will tell you, because, for a couple of reasons. One, they're younger, and I feel like, no offense, Herman, but I feel like as we're thinking about, as we're thinking about Titusville and moving forward, and prior to this past election in November, I was the only one that I think that was not retired technically on the board. I, when I'm thinking about Titusville and moving forward and thinking about families coming here and their children and their, like, I want to see some of those perspectives when we're talking about the downtown area, when we're talking about affordable housing, when we're talking about attracting families. Not only are both of them younger, they both have lived in Titusville, I think, almost their whole lives. And for me, again, I've been here since I was five, to me, that speaks a lot because you understand the uniqueness of Titusville and how we are that small-town community, but we also want to offer amenities and places to eat and places to shop. And unless you're, you've been here for a number of years, I feel like it's hard to really fully understand that. And I would really appreciate the perspective of both of them. I liked Anne Marie. I felt like she brought a lot of experience and knowledge, the contracting. She's been here eight years, so a little bit new, hasn't been here a while, and so sometimes that can be nice to have a little bit of a fresh perspective. And then Robert's been here 14 years. I know we just appointed him to TEC. He could potentially be that liaison position, and he's, I think I just said, he's been here 14 years, and understanding, I think, that small-town feel of what Titusville is. And again, going back to planning and zoning, the biggest thing that I see on the agendas for them right now is we have a lot of applications coming in, and I feel like what they will be tasked with is understanding that balance of where would multifamily go, where do we need to preserve our green space, what does Titusville look like as a whole? And even for us as a board, not just seeing one project and being like, okay, yeah, okay, yeah, this makes sense, but really kind of thinking holistically at our city. So I would say my recommendations or where I'm leaning toward is keeping Dan on. I'd like to see Janay and John move into those positions and keep Michael in the alternate position.
Member Muscoso.
Thank you. So I have the unique perspective of actually serving on that board with a lot of the members, and it's a wonderful board. We have a great board. I would recommend to keep Danny Aitken. He does a wonderful job. And now that we don't have a chair, he is acting as our vice chair, I believe. And, but he always has great insight, and I've learned a lot from him by being on that board. Also, I'd love to see John Rogers, who has served as an alternate, and he's faithfully come to the meetings. He adds great insight and truly a different perspective. Sometimes it's a little out there, but he adds a great perspective and really engages the audience. And then I would like to see Anne Marie. I think she has, she's extremely qualified, and she has background in business administration and construction. And I would like to see different representation on that board. And so those would be my recommendations for our, so it actually mirrors kind of what you were saying.
Vice Mayor Cole.
As they alluded to, I am the elder statesman up here. As such, I was on the Planning and Zoning Board 20 years ago, so, and I was a youngster then. But I really appreciate the number of applicants. And I don't want you, if you don't get appointed tonight, to not feel bad because it's, the competition is out there. I don't know that I have seen the type of people with the experience and the resumes that they have coming before us. And it really is good to see that quality of people coming before to want to be on a volunteer board and spend your time to help your city. And I just want to say that we only have a few slots, so don't feel rejected if you don't get selected because there are numerous boards that we have, and we really need our public to be involved in the things that go on in our city.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. All right. So from what I gathered, I feel like a lot of people feel that Mr. Aitken would like to continue to serve. So can I have a motion to reappoint him?
Move to reappoint Danny Aitken to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Aitken. Or should I say I'm sorry? That's kind of the feeling I got after. Member Stokel.
I would like to nominate or move to appoint John Scully as a member.
I have a nomination. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Everybody's closing in. Okay, so we're going to go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, so we got four to one. Member Muscoso in dissent. The motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Scully. All right, Member Muscoso.
Yeah, I would like to move to recommend Anne Marie Seidler for the appointment as an alternate member. Is that correct?
We still have.
Are we on regular members?
I believe you've appointed the two regular members who will expire on January 31, 2027.
Okay.
You still have an alternate that will expire on January 31, 2027, and one regular member with an expired term for January 31, 2026.
Okay.
So one regular who will expire in '26, and one alternate in '27.
Okay, so I would move to recommend John Rogers as a regular member for the Planning and Zoning.
Second. I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion fails. Oh, I'm sorry. All those opposed, say aye. Aye. I was going to say you can't abstain. Thank you. All right, motion fails. Next, remember, you were reaching for your button. Any other nominations? Member Muscoso, say first.
So I would move to recommend Anne Marie Seidler for an appointment as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. I have a motion and I have a second.
Discussion. Sorry. Michael and John are currently those alternate members, so I just want to be clear. Are we leaving, John wanted to stay. John Rogers wanted to stay an alternate. Would this be replacing Michael Finler as the alternate position then? I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
City Attorney, I'm going to default to you on that one.
That's correct, right?
I don't have the list in front of me, so partly I'm going to ask the clerk, that alternate.
City Clerk?
Which alternate position is?
Michael Finler's is up right now. And so I just want to make sure before we voted on that.
So if John doesn't move up, then?
And that would have opened it up, yes.
It would be a motion to, if I can correct my motion, it would be a move to recommend Anne Marie Seidler for an appointment as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Seeing no second, the motion dies. Member Stokel.
I would move to appoint Janay as the member for planning and zoning.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
And that's for the regular member to expire in 2026?
Yes, thank you for clarifying.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so, motion carries, four to one. Congratulations, Ms. Janay. Any other slots we got to fill?
I think we need to reappoint, or I'd make a motion to reappoint Mike Finler as an alternate.
I have a motion.
You do, you have that, and then you also have one alternate that's open. I think we do. One alternate member. Oh, that's his, okay, that's correct. I'm sorry.
Sorry, discussion.
Yeah, thank you.
So is John Rogers, is he, he's still on the board as an alternate?
Yes, ma'am.
And Mike Finler, he would still be on the board as an alternate?
If you reappointed.
If we reappoint him, and then we would have Janay as a regular member.
John Scully.
John Scully and Danny Aitken.
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, so I have a motion from Member Nelson. I didn't get a second before she did the point of order on me.
The motion would be to reappoint Mike Finler as an alternate planning and zoning.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second.
Discussion, sorry. Yep, sorry, I just wanted to open this up because he's not here, and I'm not too familiar with this alternate member. Member Nelson, did you say that he doesn't come sometimes, or he's out of town, or does he show up?
I talked to Joe Richardson this morning, thanked him for being our chair. And we talked about some of the candidates. He said Mike is appearing on a regular basis. And his suggestion was to either make John Rogers or Mike Finler the regular member.
Okay, okay.
All right, any other discussion? Vice Mayor Cole.
Oh, sorry.
Seeing none of discussion, all those in favor of, was it Finler? Finler. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Finler. I believe all of our spots are now complete, right? City Clerk, we're all complete? Okay, cool. Thank you very much. City Manager.
On to item 6D, which is the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization Citizen Advisory Committee. At the regular city council meeting on January 14, 2025, city council requested information on the term expirations and the term limits of the city's appointments to the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization's Citizen Advisory Council. The council requested information on the position, responsibilities of the position, appointments, terms, expirations, and terms, limits. Currently, there are two citizens that serve as regular members on the committee as the city's representatives. Mr. Pete Pettick was appointed on March 23, 2029, and Ms. Laura Witten was appointed on January 23, 2024. Currently, there are no term limits, expirations or term limits for citizens nominated and appointed to serve as the CAC by the city council. Bivard County Commissioners is the only entity that appoints to the Space Coast Transportation Citizens Advisory Committee that imposes term limits or term limits to their CAC members. Additionally, information is attached to include minutes of the Space Coast Transportation Organization Policy and Procedures Handbook. The handbook provides additional information on the Citizens Advisory Committee, including functions of the committee, appointments, et cetera.
All righty. Now it's time to open it for discussion. Member Nelson.
I'm not really sure what they do. Still haven't figured out what they do. I don't like the idea of having it totally open-ended. So I would suggest we do something like. So I would suggest we do something like four years, so at least we keep track of who's on there and maybe get some information about what they're doing on those boards. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Stokel.
Yep, similar. Whether we put a term limit on it or similar to Flag and Memorial, if they could come and, or at least present some type of annual report, I would, I would appreciate that.
Member Moscoso.
Yeah, my question was, does Mr. Peter Pettick, do we have a record of his attendance and his voting record, just to see how active he has been on that board? We don't?
No.
Okay.
We could probably get it through a public records request, but he has been on it for almost 16 years now, so that would take some digging. But if it's really important, we probably can do it.
Member Nelson.
I liked, uh, Member Stokel's idea of at least having an annual report so we sort of stay in the loop and do a term limit.
I see you're up next, Mr. Vice Mayor Cole, but I'm going to jump in front of you because I can't put my buzzer on.
That's your prerogative.
I know, right? So as I was newly into the TPO position, you know, diving into the TPO and everything that it entails, the Citizens Advisory and Technical Council meets on a separate day. So when us council members, and in the past, council members before me have, you know, represented that board, they didn't see that other side of things. You know, so they're kind of being, being separate. And, you know, I, I believe that when this was, in our local agreement it was created, but we just didn't put any rules on it, right? And so he was appointed, I believe in 2009, am I correct in that? So it's, at the end of this year, it's been almost 16 years. So if I could make a recommendation, I would like to see we end the term at the end of this year. And every year when we look at what our committee assignments are, we could look at that or maybe designate two years, but that's council's prerogative. I just think, you know, fresh ideas is always a good thing. I want to encourage anybody and everybody to get involved. But again, that's just my thing, is just bringing awareness to this and let council decide. So, Vice Mayor Cole.
I agree with the mayor. I, I have been on the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization Board for two years. I haven't seen any, any kind of thing coming from them at all. I've seen nothing. I don't know who these individuals are. I don't feel comfortable with having people representing the city of Titusville on a board that we, as a council, are unaware of. And, and I honestly, I agree that we need to have these people to come in and give us some kind of report. And there definitely needs to be some expiration on their time. And I guess the city council must have appointed them back in 2009, but I think that we should review them just like we review all of our other boards that we have.
Member Moscoso.
I would say we did, I mean, we didn't. The previous board appointed Laura Witten on January 23rd, 2024. So I do remember seeing her come up, but this other Peter Pettick, I, I've never seen.
Member Nelson.
So maybe the first step is we advise these people to come in and sort of give us an update on what they're doing, what's going on, how's it going, what kind of progress is being made?
What are they doing?
What are they doing? I mean, yeah, that's bottom line. So what are we doing? Yeah, and then, um, I would like to see us do the term limits.
Okay.
Or at least have that term expire every four years. Might appoint the same people, but those are probably two steps.
I would ask council for a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have one card.
My bad, I'm sorry. City Clerk?
I'm Stu Buchanan.
I got so excited in the discussion of Space Coast Transportation and Planning Organization that I lost track of my wits. Mr. Buchanan.
Hi, my name is Stu Buchanan, I'm a Titusville resident. I will be happy to inform you what the CAC and the TAC does. I sat on it for eight years for Brevard County as staff. You have the CAC and the TAC. The packet that you all see as the TPO comes from that board. What you're seeing is coming from that board. I should have brought with you my public records request that I put in, oh gosh, over two months ago. The gentleman was appointed in 2009 and the county staff has never heard from the city of Titusville again. So it is true, what the city manager said, that is correct as far as the cities go. They don't have ordinances where they've put it in their regulations as to reappointments like you have on your other boards, although you could do that route. However, the county and, in this area, city by city, when the new council members get elected and they're, they're sat in office, they reconfirm the positions. They confirm the positions. They say, yep, we're going to keep them there. I cannot stress to you the importance of the CAC board members. It directly affects what appears on the TPO agenda, which is the funding that you all receive. I would encourage each of you individually to meet with your public works director and ask his impression of what's been going on since 2009 at that board. Or go to YouTube or Space Coast TV and watch the videos of your appointee. I would encourage all of you to take the time and watch those videos of what happens at those meetings. I sat on that board as the TAC for eight years on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, and it directly affects the state and federal funding that comes to your city. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. Any further, oh, sorry, City Clerk, any further cards? Thank you. City Attorney.
Correct. I believe the, the council wants to go in the direction of having limits, that we could prepare a resolution. Does that affect your consideration to put that on the agenda? At that meeting, you could also invite your advisory committee members to come give a report, if you're so inclined. But something you have to consider, of course, is you have those that have been serving. So when would that four years apply? You know, is it going to be, you know, in November? Is that when you're going to evaluate that? At what point do you want that four years to start and end? And you currently have two members serving now. So something to think about is how you're going to apply that four years.
I sort of like, I'm sorry.
No, I thought I saw you push it, and then I looked and it wasn't there, so it threw me off.
That was my thinking.
Member Nelson.
I have to do that, to think. I sort of like the four years. I'm not sure I really care where in that year it, we do an appointment. Maybe a springtime would be good. And I would like to start in 2026, so that we have 2630 to sort of coincide with election schedule.
Member Stokel.
Yep, similar thoughts. I, I think I would like to just start with having them come present and then start giving the task maybe to the city clerk to kind of have it coincide with our other board appointments of what schedule might seem like fit in the direction of Member Nelson's idea.
Any further discussion? All right, I'm, can I ask if you guys can have a, make a motion to direct our Space Coast CAC-TAC representatives to come before us and give us a report?
Can I do it so moved?
I have a motion.
When do you want that to happen?
Move to have advisability from staff, bring back something to us to consider for reappointing of these people every four years. And second, to make time for these people to come in and sort of give us a presentation on what they're doing, how it's going.
So if I understand the motion, would you like a resolution prepared that the current members will serve until?
26.
What, is there a certain month that, you know, is it November when you appoint? When, when would that?
When do we appoint most?
Will you appoint, your, your members in November meeting is when you?
Yeah, I think that we were trying to say, we want it to kind of be consistent with our other appointments.
Sure, that's when your liaison, when you appoint yourselves.
November 2026.
So the current Citizen Advisory Committee members would continue to serve until November 26. At that time, you would reevaluate it and the new appointments would be for your terms. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Or if I may play devil's advocate, Laura was just appointed in '24.
Right.
So if we have one term end at the end of this year, and then the other one started the four years from whenever she took that position.
I thought about that, but I thought it is an advisory position. I thought about maybe staggering it so that one person ends at November 2026, maybe the other person ends at November 2028. And then you have that overlap and some, you always have somebody there that is familiar with it.
Yeah, and that was kind of my, my thoughts as well, but again, that's part of the advisability that I believe you asked for in your, your motion, right?
Yeah, and I would amend my, amend my motion to reflect that.
All right. So I have a motion. Do I have a second? I will call on you if you're doing a discussion after I get the second.
I'll second, but still have.
All right. All right, so I have a motion and I have a second. Member Stokel.
Yep. The only other thing I would request is maybe consider, I don't know if we have any other, other advisory boards doing four-year terms, maybe a two-year, just because if we now put a term on it, I think, I don't know if this is true or not, because one member has been serving for a long time. The expectation was you serve, and then when you don't want to, you can just resign whenever. I think maybe just having it so there is an expectation might bring in somebody, and four years might be a little like, oh, I don't know if I can commit to four years, but if it's two-year, they can reapply again potentially. So maybe have that as part of the advisor, advisability portion.
Yeah, I, I think that's part of the advisability so we can have further discussion on the term limits, but at least we have the, the wheels are moving, right? The wheels are moving and we can then also get a report from our, our members. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. City Manager.
Student Advisory Council, removal of members. A co-chairperson of the Student Advisory Council submitted a memo that notifies city council that the 11th grade representative of the Academic Community in Richmond Incorporated, Mr. Loudon Hopping, automatically forfeited his seat due to being absent three consecutive regular monthly meetings on October 15th, November 19th, and December 17th, 2024. Staff contacted the school and the advisor of the Academic Community in Richmond Incorporated advised that Mr. Loudon Hopping is no longer attending their school. So there's no action. This is just to inform you that that member is no longer on that board.
Thank you, City Manager.
Next is the item F, which is the Titusville Farmington LLC Management Committee. The term of regular member James Ball expires on January 31st, 2025. He has expressed his willingness and desire to continue to serve on this committee for another three years with the term to expire on January 31st, 2028. Currently, there are no other applications on file for your consideration.
Are there any cards on this one? Thank you. Mr. Ball, would you like to come up and say a few words? I know you came all this way, so I wanted to make sure I gave you the opportunity.
Jim Ball, 921 Indian River Avenue. It's been my honor to represent city of Titusville now for nine years as the appointed member of the management committee. It's a different animal. The Titusville Farmington is a very unique private-public partnership that enabled the city of Titusville to develop Area 4 Well Field, which is now the primary source of water for our city. So I'm more than happy to continue to serve. There's a lot of experience and kind of corporate knowledge in this partnership with Farmington. So I'm, I'm really just here to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Ball.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Cole.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Ball.
I have a motion.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, congratulations, Mr. Ball. Thank you for your service. City Manager.
Onto 6G, which is the Titusville Community Service Award Select Committee. The mayor will appoint the chairman and the clergy representative for the 2025 Titusville Community Service Select Committee with the confirmation of city council. The mayor has recommended Sharon James as the chair and Dennis Taylor from Park Avenue Baptist Church as the clergy representative for the Titusville Community Service Award Select Committee.
There are five people on that committee. Any cards?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Member Nelson.
Move to confirm Sharon James as the chair and Dennis Taylor from Park Avenue Baptist Church as the clergy representative for the Titusville Community Service Awards Select Committee.
Second.
Thank you, Member Nelson for the motion, Member Stokel for the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. I should probably apologize to Sharon. I did not tell her she was going to be the chairperson, so, sorry Sharon, if you're watching on TV. City Manager.
The Titusville Flag and Memorial Committee, Mark Marquette, is here to present their annual report. And in addition, Resolution 132016 states that as your ministerial duty, city council shall affirm the appointments of the members in the election, in the election of officers in January of each year. Staff is requesting the council affirm the appointment of the members and the election of officers as written in the annual report. Mr. Marquette.
Thank you very much. I'm Mark Marquette. I'm the director of the American Space Museum, just a block away from here. If whoever in this room admits they're over 50 years old, I'm going to, you're going to remember exactly where you were this morning, 39 years ago. That's when the Challenger space shuttle blew up. And this is what our committee, one of the big things we do is recognize our American Space Heroes. It's a beautiful ceremony that was conducted Sunday at Sandpoint Park. Thank you for being there. Mayor Connors and City Manager Scott was there. And it is, in my opinion, one of the best celebrate, or best remembrances of the Apollo Challenger memorial crew that is done in America. Very patriotic with the Civil Air Patrol cadets escorting people that put a carnation on our park over here on the 17 plaques that are there, so. I'll make a short report. It's filed with the city. We have 10 members. We meet 10 months out of the, nine months out of the year. We don't meet in the summer. And as I look at the things we've done over the year, as my honor to, to be the chairman, we're the emotional side of the committees here. We, we celebrate not only our astronaut heroes, but our military heroes, and then our beautiful flag up and down A1A for the whole world to see. So a couple of the other highlights we do every year, of course, Memorial Day's a big day, and we celebrate that. At the Day Street is particularly an interesting cemetery that has been very revamped, that we have an event there. Flag Day on June 14th this year, Titusville Blue Mass Patriotic Service. We conducted the Good Shepherd Lutheran Church, and we're trying to expand on that. And of course, your Veterans Day ceremonies that we do. We are looking at doing a Constitution Day in September. As far as the Avenue of the Flags that US Highway 1 officially is, the flags fly continuously, except, of course, through the Christmas season with those decorations. Perhaps one of the least known aspects of our Avenue of the Flags is they exist only, solely through the donations and generosity of our committee, our community members. And the committee wishes to thank city officials for supporting all of our efforts, particularly our police and fire department. We especially thank City Manager Scott Larrice and the Public Works Department staff for their commitment to the Avenue of the Flags and the patriotic events. The committee also recognizes District 1 of the Brevard County Parks and Recreation for its commitment to assist in our patriotic ceremonies. And we thank our community for their patriotism in helping fly Old Glory on US Highway 1 and for supporting our community events. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? All right, City Manager.
Yeah, you'll need to affirm the appointments of the members and election of officers as written in the annual report.
Member Nelson.
Move to approve Resolution Number 1320-
Move to approve Resolution Number 132016, the appointment of members and election of officers as written in the annual report.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. City manager, are we on item number 14 now?
Yes, item 14, which is the mayor's report.
Awesome. Good evening, all you beautiful people. I'm excited to see you here. You know, I know people are very passionate about getting on boards and commissions, and I'm excited about that. Everywhere I go and everywhere I engage in the community, I encourage everybody and anybody to get involved. And I'm really excited about the number of applications we have. And hopefully Ms. Shiffler will see them around a little bit more. I wanted to give you guys an update on all the things I've been doing just the last two weeks. I was at the TICO Board of Directors meeting, which there was some interesting things going on there. Unfortunately, Space Perspective is no longer out there, but there are a lot of exciting growth opportunities. They have a ton of federal grants in place, looking at redoing their, their tower runway improvements. It's a very exciting time because that's going to be an economic driving engine for the City of Titusville. I, I had a meeting with Herrera Property Registry and discussed what they do. And currently in our city ordinances, we charge $150. If a bank forecloses on a home, they have to register with the city. $150. If they're 10 days late, there's a $500 fine. I believe there was a request for information that was put out, and we all, I believe saw it if you check your email. But the city has collected about $20,000. According to their data estimates, we're only collecting about 59% of our foreclosed properties in the City of Titusville. And I think that is something we should relook at and explore. I think a $150 fee to charge a big bank that's foreclosing on a Titusville resident is probably kind of low. If you look at the other municipalities in the area, they're charging $300, sometimes twice a year. So that will be something that I will ask council to consider, if you guys would be so inclined, to bring that up for discussion. Any thoughts? Member Stokel?
Yes, this is actually a company that I spoke to probably like two years ago or so. If you guys remember, well, some of you guys may remember, we used to use Pro Champs, and they went out of business for the foreclosures. I was specifically interested in this concerning blight issues in our community. So while, yes, it's nice to, you know, bring in a little bit of revenue, the main goal for me was to kind of clean up our blight. While I appreciate our current in-house process, I, I think it's falling short on a couple areas. One, this company has attorneys, so they're able to go after them a little bit more than our department can right now because we only have two attorneys on staff, and I know that they've got a lot on their plate. The other thing, their software. So when I asked our staff to see, okay, we're collecting, you know, they sent us a list of where, which properties have paid. I said, can you give me the list of all the properties that are eligible? We don't have that software to do. This company does. So I am definitely interested in us pursuing this for, one, I feel like we could potentially bring in a little bit more revenue than we're collecting right now. And two, most importantly, I think that we could get more than 59%. So I would like to see us potentially look at bringing them on. The other thing to, you might be asking, okay, how much does this cost? They don't cost anything. They take a percentage off of what they collect. And I did ask them when I met with them, you know, I said, hey, we're getting, you know, $150. They typically charge 300 and get that, and then they would take a percentage of that. So it may be cost neutral. My big thing is though, it would be taking off staff time, and I think our percentage would go up. So that is definitely something that I would like to see us do.
Yes, any ways that we can be more efficient and more effective using technology and alleviating that staff time? I think is critical as we move forward into the 25th century. I'm just kidding, it's 21st, maybe. I don't know. But what I thought was really cool was the ability that code enforcement will have with it. Like they can drill down and say, you contact this person who's supposed to be managing the property. If that person doesn't answer, you go to this person. This is the bank that holds the note. Therefore, like to Sarah's point, we could actually hold blighted properties accountable. Member Nelson?
That's what we were trying to do with $150. We wanted to make sure people were, banks were taking care of that property, not letting, you know, the grass grow three feet high. Making sure we knew who to contact if there was damage, if there was a break-in, if there was a problem. So that was really the drive behind it. I like Sarah's suggestion. I like that. And that could be increased revenue, but more important, importantly, we would know who to contact if we had a problem. And if people let the property go, we'd know who, who to go after.
So, so just if you, if you do choose to outsource, we will have to go through the procurement process, which this company could certainly participate in, but we'd have to open it up for competition as a, as a procurement. Absolutely. I was just, I thought it was an interesting idea, I bring up before council. And again, to Sarah's point, the ability to drill down and go, this is who's accountable for this property, I think is really what we need to accomplish because unfortunately our staff just don't have the time to, to track all those folks down. So, member Stokel, you have?
I was just going to make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, is there any cards on this potential RFQ motion that I don't know is going to be made yet? So I'll ask for cards here in a second.
Yes, I would move to advise staff to put out a request for proposals for this process. I don't know what we would call it, but potentially registering our foreclosed properties in a more efficient manner.
Second.
Alright, so I have a motion and I have a second. City attorney, did you want to say something?
No, I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that, you know, if they wanted to speak to this item before you vote.
Yeah, after the motion and the second, I was going to open up to discussion. Anybody, raise your hand now if you would like to comment. Alright, thank you, seeing none. Any further council discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. As I continue through my week, I went to the Arbor Day celebration. Thank you, Ms. Shiffler. We had a great conversation there. Chamber Board of Directors installation dinner, Martin Luther King Day Festival, American Legion Car Show, Martin Luther King Day service, VFW inauguration watch party, Martin Luther King Day block party. And I also met with the Titusville Housing Authority, which I thought was a very, very amazing meeting. If anybody's not familiar with the Titusville Housing Authority, it's basically our largest affordable housing provider in the City of Titusville. It's a separate entity, but they're looking for ways to be involved with our city and kind of work together. Just to kind of give you an overview, they operate 255 public housing units and 675 choice vouchers. And they're spending approximately $60 million this year on improvements to the properties that they own. So that is exciting news for the city. Where the reason I want to bring this up for council consideration is we have an affordable housing committee. And I thought it would, might make a little bit of sense if our largest, you know, government-run housing authority might act as a liaison on that committee. A lot of that stuff is orchestrated by state statute, but I wanted to let you guys know that Brian, the executive director, is very much about working with our city and kind of coordinate, coordinating resources, if you will. So I just wanted to let you guys know I had that meeting and throw it up to you guys if you guys had any ideas of how we can move forward and work together with our housing authority. Member Miskoso?
I'm just curious, how are we currently working with our housing authority? Like what is the relationship?
We have an affordable housing group that you appoint.
Yes.
And the housing authority executive drafter, the new, when he came in, he did brief council on what his duties and responsibilities were.
So when we talk about a liaison, what would that look like?
I just figured where he could be at their meetings, give them an update on what the, the housing authority is. You know, it wouldn't necessarily be a voting member or, you know, in terms of recommendations. But I think, you know, the folks on the, the committee, you know, I think would benefit from a guy who's doing it every day. He's our largest, you know, public housing guy and organization in, in our city. So I just thought, whatever we could do to bridge those gaps might make a little bit of sense. City attorney?
Yeah, as the, as the mayor pointed out, the membership on that board is driven by the statute. The statutory created board, our ordinance mirrors the statute on the makeup of that board. And that doesn't provide for a liaison position. I mean, if that board would like to, they could certainly invite the housing, someone from the housing authority to come to their meetings, and they could have dialogue and updates. I just wanted to let you know that it doesn't provide for a, you know, technically for a liaison position on that board. But, you know, if we want to explore ideas, you could, I would suggest you might invite Terry Franklin, who's over that. Any suggestions she may have on the interaction between those boards or how they may benefit? And then council on that consideration could certainly talk to her and see if there's ways to, to provide that interaction between those boards.
Thank you, city attorney. Member Miskoso?
I mean, it seems like a reasonable idea. Would that involve changing their bylaws to include the liaison?
Well, again, the makeup of that board is controlled by statute.
Okay.
So that's why I want to say, I'm not so sure we have the authority to create a liaison position formally with that board. I don't know that the housing authority is even interested in having someone serve as a liaison to that board. So that's why I suggested first, potentially, we could get some information from, from Terry about how that would look. And maybe alternatives is to have someone from the housing authority attend our meetings. They could invite them on a, on a base, regular basis to have the interaction.
Thank you, city attorney. And when I met with him and kind of, he's like, how can we work together? I'm like, well, we have affordable housing, you know, it kind of makes sense, right? And he was very enthusiastic about it. I gave him an application for a board and he emailed it to me like two hours later. So he's looking for ways to get involved. I don't, again, I'm not a lawyer. I just want to bring it up and see what council thought. Member Nelson?
I sort of like the idea of inviting him to participate, but a question, Terry Franklin isn't very, isn't she very involved with that board? And how involved is she with the housing authority? So you have somebody acting as a liaison in effect.
I understand that. He scheduled a meeting with me to ask how we can work better together.
Okay, so maybe invite him to come visit the board? That would work.
Yep. Then I think it'd be interesting for council to get an overview, especially nearly like it on what they do, because we do appoint their board. Right. So. Any, Member Stokel, sorry?
No, that's fine. I, I think that's what I would like, is to maybe just get a little bit more information. I think that's why I just, I'm hesitant to say my opinion because I don't feel like I have enough information to make an informed decision on it. It sounds like we have someone that's very eager and wants to help bridge gaps, which is what I would like. I just don't know what that looks like from our standpoint and how we can help foster that. But if there's something we can do, I, I do want to do it. I just would like a little bit more information, I think.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I'll, do you guys want to invite him in and come talk to us at like a social presentation?
He usually comes in or sends a report.
Does.
It would be nice to have him come in and talk to us. So, do we need a motion? Okay, so I would move to-
We have one card.
Oh, excuse me.
Stan Johnston?
Okay, thank you, Stan.
So I would move to have him come in and do a presentation to us.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, council. Alrighty, today, just to give you an update, I went to a 100-year-old birthday party. No, sorry, that was on the list.
And it wasn't mine?
Yeah, exactly. Maybe, in a few years. Alright, next, nothing? Next I want to talk about is the Tourism Development Council. At the last meeting, at the same time, I was confirmed by the county commission to serve on the Tourism Development Council, and I had my first meeting as of last week. There was a few committees that were axed by that council that are not going to meet. But there are two committees that will meet, the beach improvement and the marketing subcommittees. The reason why this is important is because this is our opportunity as North Brevard Titusvillians to have our input in how those hotel bed tax dollars are spent. So I, as a member of that council, have the ability to appoint members to each of those subcommittees. So if you have an interest in beach improvement or the marketing subcommittees, please reach out to me and I can chat with you about it. But yeah, I just want to look for volunteers at this point with that. Also, I want to update you, I went to the civilian military council banquet. The purpose of this organization is to foster a sense of familiarity between community, between the military leaders of Patrick Space Force Base, Cape Canaveral Space Force Station, and the leaders of the civilian community in Brevard. I also met with a little organization that's little but mighty called Tidy Up Titusville. This is the first time you're going to hear me say it, but it's not the last. As they've asked me to get involved and help cheerlead their efforts as they help clean up Titusville. I know the, the blight on the side of the roads is very frustrating. And I know the folks at Public Works do a great job, but they can't be everywhere all the time. So they're trying to create a network of, of volunteers that will be organized and mighty to get out there and make our community great. So they are going to be planning as part of KBB's big clean, cleanup event on April 5th, I believe. They're going to be out there competing as well. So more information will come on that. And then the big conversation that's always asked is, you know, dumping stuff on the streets, the mattresses, the couches, you know. I'm sure we're all hearing about that. So at this time, I would like council to weigh in and see what we would like, you know, to do. Member Miskoso?
Yeah, so I had a coffee with council about a week ago, and that was actually, the, the biggest topic was, what are we doing about the trash and the mattresses? And I'd have to agree with people. I've been out with code enforcement twice. I've sat down with Kevin. We have a major issue, and I'm glad to see that we have Tidy Up Titusville and KBB, but I think something needs to be done. You know, I didn't grow up here, so I do come with a different perspective, but I see that other cities are somehow able to manage this. So I, I, even with the explanations, I want to know what are our protocols? Why are we not able to keep up with this issue? Do we need more education, additional trucks, more workers? Like what is the issue? I feel like we have enough people in our community that want to get this cleaned up, that we should be able to do this. Another question I got is, and I agree, is we're, we're putting in million-dollar homes in tranquility, yet we have toilets on the side of our streets. We've got tourists coming in for, you know, launches, yet there's mattresses and trash everywhere. And I think that we can do better. So I don't know what that looks like, but I'm, I'm really happy that you opened up this discussion. That's why I asked for the records request for South Street, because I wanted to know who was in charge of that mowing. Because what they do, if you go down South Street, I mean, there's trash everywhere, and they just mow right over it. And we're contracting that out, and if they're not doing what we're paying for, then we need to find someone else. And so for me, this is, this is a big issue, but I think it's low-hanging fruit that we could get taken care of. I don't know how we do it, but thank you for opening up the discussion.
My pleasure. Member Stokel?
Yes, to that point, I feel like this got brought up several years ago, especially with the mattresses. And I, maybe Kevin can weigh in. I feel like what was happening with one particular house, they'd go and pick up, and then they'd go and dump the next day. I mean, it was a daily thing that was occurring. Kevin, do you have any thoughts or can you weigh in on why this? I mean, I just drove down Sisson the other day, and again, it was all along.
So particularly the, the area there on Sisson doesn't have dumpsters. So they're car service multifamily homes, and they use Sisson as their displacement for the lack of dumpsters. Normally in our multifamilies, we use dumpsters. We don't allow them to have cars. That one was built with cars, so they use that. So they do get almost a weekly collection, and we don't pick up Sisson until Friday, so we don't run bulk collection on the south end of town. They run by the routes. They run daily. So we do work off of lists. We do work off of called-in items. I think one of the driving factors of more in town is that the transfer station doesn't, no longer takes resident drop-offs. So that pushes people to the landfill in Cocoa, which we also have to use. The hurricane did set us back because our staffing was pushed towards hurricane repairs and cleanup. Now they're back to normal services. But our do bulk collection is running a couple of weeks behind, so.
Do we know when that this Mockingbird will be open again for drop-off?
No, I don't. I don't know when- No, I don't, I don't know when they'll go back to that till the new transfer station is built.
Okay.
Which will be moving the transfer from where it is now to the Mockingbird facility.
Are we looking at a couple of years?
I don't think they've started that part of construction yet.
Okay. It's, have you seen, since there are no dumpsters along Sisson, are there any options that you could potentially, that you know of, that we could? I don't know. I, I, it's, it's all the time. And even, even if you guys were running and not behind with the hurricane stuff, I feel like that, because there are no dumpsters there, I mean, where are they supposed to put their things?
The, the challenge would be that the, the Homeward Association and condo station would have to give up parking-
Okay.
-to put in dumpsters. And typically, when they don't build it at the development, putting a dumpster retroactively is very difficult. It does cost you parking or it costs you property. So we can certainly reach out to them. I think we did a few years ago, reach out to them about the opportunity to put dumpsters in.
Yeah.
I don't think it was received at that time, but we can certainly, for that particular property, look back at it.
Okay. Yeah. I, we just need to keep brainstorming and I'll ask at conferences and we'll try to see, because it's a, it's a complex issue. I, I don't know, but I would like to see, to Member Muskoso's point. I, I think it could be nicer.
I mean, I would think an advisability on making these folks put in dumpsters is probably a good idea to at least look at. Member Muskoso.
I would say on Sisson, I know you said we're only picking up once, but since there are those kind of restrictions where they don't have anywhere, is there a way that we can increase the pickup? In that area, just until we're able to ask them about possibly getting dumpsters on their property?
We can look at routing trucks there more often and see what effect that has.
Member Nelson?
And a question, what can we do legally to get them to put in dumpsters? I mean-
There's, there's a lot of factors that would go into that, that we would have to look at. But, but if there's advisability now, you know, run the trucks, we can certainly look at that. And I can talk to Kevin about any other options, city manager, that we could explore.
Okay. So that would be my motion, is to run the trucks twice a week and look into what we can do in addition to that.
I have a motion?
I second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Is there any discussion from the public? Mr. Johnson, I see you raising your hand. Would you like to? Uh, I, hold on, I called him Mr.?
Yes.
No, no.
Yeah.
Well, this, the-
Are you passing?
Are you passing? Are you going to speak on the motion that we just? No, no, I asked for the motion and the second, and then I was going to the public, because this was not on the agenda. So, Mr. Johnson, the, the motion before you is about trash pickup advisability.
Yes, I understand. Listen, I, I was in Public Works, and I want to say, first of all, I want to, I want to still praise again Public Works for the good job they're doing. Now, there is a problem with some women in the community, women in the community. Apparently, a bunch of them, they want their toilet changed. And I, I, for, with the life of me, I cannot understand why the, the standard toilet that was made so many years ago that still works has to be replaced. And the thing is, it seems like the same thing with mattresses. There's just a lot of people dissatisfied, and they want something new. And you're, we're just going to have to live with it. Didn't used to be that way. I was satisfied with the toilet I, I have had for all my life, and never had to replace it. So, I think Kevin is doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Shiffler?
Shiffler, Tropic Street. And I, I too want to thank Public Works. I think they do a great job in my little poor neighborhood that people, you know, don't pay too much attention about littering. They think it's okay. And the neighborhood actually maintains. And the, the Public Works comes through and they, they do a great job removing all kinds of debris there. And my question is, isn't it part of the planning of a multifamily or multi-unit development to have a place for trash pickup? How can you have multifamily units that don't have anywhere to throw their garbage? How is that possible in the planning stages, Brad Parish? I'm going to have to come and have an appointment with you, so you can explain to me how it is that multifamily units can get by without building in their plans trash pickup. Come on.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Shiffler. And who, I don't know when the building was built. It could have been a long time ago, you know, so unfortunately sins of the past come back to haunt us, so. Member Nelson?
I would say, Tony, that building, those condos are probably 40 years old, so.
Alright, so I have a motion, I have a second. We had our discussion. You have a question. Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes. My question is, running an extra truck down the road, how is that going to affect your operation, Kevin?
Well, it takes a truck out of route from another location of the city that, that day, so.
Can we do it?
We would probably do it at the end of the day. It's an overtime route. So we'd pull them in, probably wouldn't dump it at the end of the day, and just have a truck route through there when they finish another route.
So, you know, litter is definitely a, a problem here. I'm a runner, and I run all over the city, and I see, I mean, people just throw stuff out, just to throw it out, you know, and I, I don't know if there could be, if the keep- Titusville Beautiful Program?
Tidy Up Titusville.
Tidy Up Titusville, could do a promotional thing to try to make people aware. You know, if you walk in a place and it's clean, you're not going to litter. Singapore is a place that you can go to. You don't see anything on the street, because if you drop something, if you spit chewing gum out, you get slashes with a whip. I'm serious. Now, I'm not saying we need to go to that extreme, but we need to have some kind of program to, to try to make people aware that we don't want our city to look like a, a dump. And as people always say, the first impression is a lasting impression. And people, we have a lot of tourists that come through here, and we don't want them to see that, so. Whatever we can do, we definitely need to do.
Member Stokel?
Yes, I, I agree with Member, or Vice Mayor Cole. I think we need to kind of change our culture a little bit. I am going to vote in favor of this. My only hesitation with it is I don't want the expectation now for these residents to think, oh, this is great, they're picking up twice, and that's the norm. I, I really would like a better solution. So I'm okay with it, I think for short term, especially since it sounds like we'll be paying overtime, which I'm not a huge fan of. But I think that we know this is a big problem, so I'll vote in favor of it. But I would really like us to maybe try to keep brainstorming a longer-term solution, because to me, that's almost like promoting that, yeah, we can put more stuff out, because they'll just come and pick it up.
Member Muskoso?
Yeah, I would agree. I think there, we need to have an educational piece to this as well, not just for that road. But I think in general, that could be something we look into for our city to promote. As council members, we can promote something, take pride in your community. I think that will go a long way, but I think it is worth spending that money to get the city cleaned up. And then, you know, what I've heard people say, well, I see a mattress here, and then somebody else dumps another mattress on top, and another mattress on top, and that seems to be what's happening. So like, to your point, we don't want to see that just being the place people dump. So I don't know if that's something that we can kind of watch, or, or how that works. But I think, I'm very thankful we're having this discussion.
Sure. To your point, ma'am, you saw the PSA that the mayor had done before the meeting started, before your public engagements. So perhaps we could do some PSAs on litter and maybe get the Tidy Up Titusville to be part of that?
It's already scheduled for Wednesday at 3:00.
There you go.
I forgot to even write it down to talk about, but yes. Motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Alright. Next up, from Tidy Up Titusville, there's no trash cans by bus stops. I don't know whose responsibility is to put trash cans by bus stops. I don't know. Is that, is that a county thing, where they built the bus stop and they're supposed to put a trash can in there there? Can you enlighten me, Kevin?
Yeah, the, the bus stops, except for the ones that we placed on De Leon, are maintained by the county's bus service. So, so we do pick up the ones on De Leon that, that neighborhood services paid for. We pick those up with the downtown trash cans, but the rest of them are the county's.
Okay. So I need to have a conversation with the county about putting some trash cans out by the bus stops?
Yes.
Alright, got you. Uh, can I help you, sir? I'm in the middle of my report.
I just wanted to comment on litter and trash.
Alright, we'll, we'll get, we'll get to you, but thank you. Sidewalks. So the sidewalk vendor that I believe that took out and replaced some of those sidewalks has been leaving concrete chunks around town. So hopefully we can hold that vendor accountable to removing the concrete chunks. I know there's a big pile of them at the corner of Harrison and Park at our fire department. So I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. Next up, I want to tell you about my meeting with Parks and Recreation. Sorry. Keep the chatter down, please. Parks and Recreation, Blanton Park, right across the street from the Boys and Girls Club.
And they finally started on it.
Yes. They had some unfortunate setbacks due to increased regulation regarding stormwater, because they were not able to put the parking spaces that they wanted to put there. They wanted nine parking spaces, and it wouldn't allow them to do that. And so it was going to cost them about $180,000 to put parking spaces, and they had about $340,000 to beautify a park, so they're going to use it for playground equipment. Wustoff Park, they have the money to demo and replace the old community center there and put up a new kitchen and pavilion, which sounds kind of nice. Unfortunately, with the overregulation, they can't get through the stormwater, because it's in a critical area. Singleton, they want to put new pickleball courts in. They cannot, because of the overregulation, because it's in a critical area. And that is the point I'm trying to make, is looking at all possible avenues, like Ms. Shiffler brought up, when 40 years ago, why didn't they put, think about putting dumpsters there, right? And when we put regulations in place, or ordinances, when we put regulations and ordinances in place, we got to think of all consequences. So while these ordinances are probably put in place for a very good reason, to protect from developers destroying our natural resources, unfortunately, that cuts both ways. And now we have a Parks Department that has projects funded, ready to go, that can't get through our own laws. And I know that's a big concern, especially when we talk about the pickleball players, because they're intense and they love their pickleball. I just wanted to bring it up and let you guys know that, that we're thinking about these things, and we're trying to get through them, so that our community can enjoy their, their recreation. I'm going to an FDOT meeting this week to advocate for the Titusville 405 project. Think we need a little bit more representation on that. I'm also meeting with Congressman Mike Herodopoulos on Thursday. I want to let you know what my legislative priorities are. I don't know what the federal government's going to do. Who knows right now, right? They basically paused all grants, so we don't know what they're going to do. But I'm going to talk to him about the lagoon, because I believe it's going to take federal intervention to clean that up. Our city budget can't do it, and the state has obviously had many years to look at it. But I think it's going to take building that relationship with the, the federal government to, to make that happen. Unfortunately, all the, the stuff east of us is controlled by the federal government, so we, we need an ally on that regard. So I just wanted to let you know I'm advocating for that, and then also for projects funded by the airport. And then we're also sending an economic delegation across the river to NASA at the end of February. This is really exciting, because the Kennedy Space Center and some of those folks out there want to build a relationship with our city and talk about how we can grow our city with good business out there at the, the Space Center. Proclamations. This week, I'll be presenting three proclamations, the three deserving Eagle Scouts, which you don't hear that very often, so I think it's worth a proclamation, just FYI, guys. Now I'm going to get into my request. I know I seem that I already requested on you guys a little bit, but I'm going to request a little bit more. I'm requesting counsel authorization for mayor, vice mayor, and any other council members who wish to attend a Veterans Day event in Cocoa on March 8th, 2025, where Congressman Herodopoulos will be the main speaker. Member Nelson?
Question, do we need authorization?
Yes, of course. It's $150 a person to attend.
Oh, okay. Let's find out who is planning on attending.
I don't know. I don't know who wants to go.
So, it would be you, Herman?
I'd poten, depending on the time, I'd potentially be interested in going as well.
It's a Saturday evening, I believe.
Or, it looks like it's Fri, oh yeah, it is a Saturday, yeah. And our Titusville Police Awards is on Friday, and then this would be Saturday.
Yeah, but I don't remember. City Attorney, did you have something?
Well, you said $150. I, I'm not sure what that's for. That's what I advise counsel, you know, when you're spending money, it ought to be part of your, associated with your duties as council members. So I'm not sure what the event is, or if we need that information. But I would suggest if you're going to spend money to do something as council members, it ought to be part of your duties.
You said, our congressman will be there, is the speaker? Okay. I, yeah, I would be interested in attending.
Member Nelson?
Not sure how I feel about that, but $750. We don't necessarily, we didn't budget for it, I'm assuming.
$450, if three people go.
Well, Megan, needs to check.
Yeah.
I would need to check. Do we have a budget item for this?
We, we don't, but we'll do a budget amendment for you.
Okay. Then I would move to authorize council members to attend. There you go.
Veterans Day event in Cocoa.
Veterans Day event in Cocoa.
March.
There it is, March 8th.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A card?
I'm sorry, what?
We have a card.
There's a card on that? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, I got excited asking for money. Alright, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you for keeping on my toes. Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
And that will, as part of your motion, there will be a budget amendment to come back to you prior to the event.
Thank you. And there's a request for counsel to authorize Mayor Andrew Connors to attend the Florida League of Cities, or sorry, Florida League of Mayors events in Tallahassee, March 26th, or sorry, 24th through 26th, as we lobby our state legislature. Member Stokel?
Yes. I didn't know this was going to be, I didn't know we had to put ours on here, because sometimes I just ask. During this time, this is also the Legislative Action Days, which I would assume you would be attending, because typically the mayors that are there, they attend that. I also typically go to this every year, and I wanted to see also if Member Muskoso was interested in going as one of our representatives. I ideally would like that. I obviously can't say your schedule. And then with that, I would also request that we move our council meeting, since it falls on this, to the following week.
One motion at a time.
I know. So, anyway, so yes, I think that it's important for you to attend that. I would also like to attend, and then if Member Muskoso can attend, I would like her to attend as well.
Yeah, so where I stand on Legislative Action Days, just for the general public, is if you look at our demographics and how our House representation is set up, we have Chase Tremont to the north, and we have Saroy to the south. You know, I really feel like our city's cut in half, so it's really on us as a city to advocate for our city. You know, so it's going to take a collective effort of going up there, rubbing elbows, even, you know.
Schmoozing.
Schmoozing. Asking pretty please to, to try to make a difference, to get state appropriations and the, the right legislation for our city. So any further discussion from counsel? Can I have a motion? Oh, sorry. I, let me get my motion and my second, then I'll call on you. Thank, thank you.
I'll move the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion from the crowd? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now I have a rest, a request of counsel to authorize Mayor Andrew Connors to have membership of the Civilian Military Council. As I described earlier, it is leaders from Patrick Space Force Base and the Cape Canaveral Space Force Station, and all those other leaders around Brevard County, just as folks go to the EDC and various different memberships. I can tell you, somebody who went to the meeting last week, they were very excited to see Titusville represented and kind of joined in with the rest of the county. So I put that before you, to see if you guys will approve. Member Nelson?
Question, have we ever done that before?
Yes. Mayor Tully ended it. He, he, as a former Navy captain, didn't feel that it was worth the time. Walt went a couple times, but, but stopped going, and Dan wasn't interested in it.
And the cost is?
I think it's like $785.
Seven eighty-five?
A year. A year. No, per meeting. Kidding.
Okay, so I would make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Member Stokel?
Yep, I was just going to say, I've been to this before as a guest, and we did not have much Titusville representation, and I've been to-
have much Titusville representation, and I've been to meetings in the past. There, a lot of them are down at the south end of the county, so I appreciate you trying to kind of make representation for Titusville, so that's all I was going to say.
Thank you. Any further council discussion? Any cards in the audience?
Stan Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All those in favor?
Yeah, we'll need a budget amendment with that as well, to come back to you.
Yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, I have a request for council, this is different, to allow me to pay the city $35, right? Stay with me here. So I got invited to an event, and I do like everything. I send it to Christine to put on my calendar and RSVP. Well, it had a cost of $35, and so she just went ahead and paid it with her P-card. So I don't think the city should pay for it, so I want to put that process in place and put it on the record that I want to give those funds back, because I'm, even though I'm representing the city in that capacity, because it's one of those chamber-type events, I just want, it's $35. So, do you guys agree?
If you're giving money back, you can disagree.
I don't know the process for it, so I didn't want anybody to look at a line item of a budget and go, why did Mayor Connors give us $35, you know? So just full transparency. Member Nelson.
So Scott, can Andrew give us $35, and we'll order pizzas, and, you know?
Yeah, you don't have to have a motion on that.
All right, thank you very much, council.
Trash trucks.
Trash trucks. All right, next up is I have a request, council direct city staff to make all resolutions available online on municode.
The resolutions aren't on online?
Yeah, they are. I could not find them.
Okay.
Member Muskoso, have you ever seen them on municode?
Municode is your code.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the database. It says municode at the top of my web browser, so that's what I see. What's our online database, where the ordinances and charter and everything's available?
So, yeah, that's not on municode.
Yeah.
Okay, but I'm not sure it needs to be on municode, but if there's a spot for resolutions where we can pull them up, that works.
Because on the web browser now, like, and again, it says on my URL municode, so that's why I call it, right? And you have your, you have all your different little circle boxes, there's none for resolutions.
We might have to find somebody. I am not a computer person, I will say that.
Well, you know, just staff-wise, we're going to have to find all of them. How far back do you want us to go on them? And then we're going to have to have the logistics of putting something together on it.
I mean, I think reasonably at least the last 20 years to get started, until we can advise further. I mean, what do you guys think? I mean, the request for information that I put in, where it took less than two hours for it to send all those meeting minutes, was pretty efficient. It's just really just uploading those resolutions, in my opinion. But again, in an effort of full transparency, I feel like they should be. Member Stokel.
Yep, I feel like what you're, so they're not on our website right now, anywhere. Okay, so that's what I wanted to clarify. So I think that maybe it doesn't go on municode, but you're looking for it to be at least public. And I'm okay with it to an extent. I think, and this is what I was going to share in my report, I'm okay with us, and I actually really appreciate us coming up with ideas and changing policies. I think that also we just want to be mindful of whatever we are asking, this was what I was going to say, is can we, as a council, start to prioritize what we're wanting? Because each time we vote on something, it's like, okay, now staff is going to go do that, and staff is going to go do that. And while I like this, unless there was a pressing issue where I felt like this is like imperative, and citizens are complaining about it like they are the litter, this would be like moved to the back burner. Like, it's on the list, but I would rather staff, like, spend time doing something else. So that's, I'm in favor of it, but I just, I would like us to, as a council, kind of start to have that discussion of what's important to us, and maybe list them out, and then say, okay, this is my top priority now, can we work together on finding a solution? So staff, that's my fear, because the other flip side is, we're talking about planning turnover times, and it's taking 50 days to review, but if we're going to have them go research this and then go research that, that's pulling their time. So that's my only hesitation with it. If it's a quick thing, and we're going back, you know, a certain amount of years, and they can pull them relatively easy, I'm fine with it. I just, as we're doing this, I just want to be aware of that.
Member Muskoso.
Yeah, I would agree. I love the clerk courts website, because you can get absolutely everything on there. And I think we're moving forward with getting our agendas online. I think that's been great, we're not having to email our clerk to receive those. So I think that's a good first step. I didn't realize the resolutions weren't online, and so I agree, I think we need to prioritize, but I do think that's a good thing, and perhaps we need to start looking at a plan to get us completely online, because I think it has helped where residents can just go and pull the agenda. And I'll have people call me and say, can you send me the agenda? And I say, we don't have to do that anymore. Like, you can go there and pull it yourself. And so I think that's where we need to be moving, and so perhaps, you know, we can personally come up with a plan of what we would like to see as things come up. So as you're looking and you think, I need a resolution, I need resolutions, we can start writing those things down and coming up with the list. I also don't want to bombard our staff with things, but if this is something that you feel is important, I'm always for getting more information online in the hands of the public.
Yes, because if I asked you, you know, hey, I want to look up the Titusville Environmental, or Titusville, Titusville Community Service Award, that's a resolution, and to get the details on it, I need to be able to pull it. So again, there's a lot of examples like that, and then also, I feel like you can't truly understand where you're going if you don't know your past. So understanding what has been done before, so you can learn from it and grow. So that's where I want to have the ability to, at my leisure, like anybody else, to review those resolutions. So at this time, I'll leave it up to council if they want to do anything with it. Member Stokel.
Yep, just one more question for staff. Do we have a place that we file these resolutions electronically, like?
It's on Laserfish.
Okay, so if we already have them, I feel like, I think it's reasonable to say I would move to move resolutions from the past 20 years and put them on our website.
I'll second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor? Oh, 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 oh. Cards, Mr. Johnson, do you have anything to add? Thank you. Any others? All right, I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you, council. All right, I got another one for you guys. As part of my outreach to the community, I want to schedule quarterly meetings with HOA presidents here in this great city of Titusville. So I want to reach out and invite them in to come share their concerns, because what I found throughout the campaign, concerns that people are having on the north end might be similar to people are having on the south end. So I figure this is another way for me to communicate with our residents. In order to do that, I need the authorization of staff time, because it might take more than two hours for Christine to help me get this scheduled. So I wanted to ask you for your approval, council. Vice Mayor Cole.
My question is, do you want the main HOAs or the HOAs and the sub HOAs?
La Cita's a different animal, I don't know. I'm going to let Christine figure that out. I'll let HOA, I'll let La Cita figure that out.
All right.
I'm just going to invite them, and if they're an HOA president, come in, share your concerns with me, and we can have a conversation.
Yeah, I think the, why it's going to take more than two hours is, we don't know all the HOAs in the city, so we'll have to research it and find out who it is, and to Herman's, Vice Mayor's point, yeah, like, I think La Cita has six, right? And the only one that's really advertised is your main one.
Member Stokel.
This is something that you're doing, so I know I don't have much say in what it is that you want to do. My suggestion, though, would be maybe, and to save Christine some potential headache of what this could entail, just maybe contacting the major HOAs, if there's like Royal Oak, La Cita, Meadow Ridge, any of the big subdivisions, and I would just start with there, and maybe it's a few. And then as you do this, if others contact you, because I think word would get around, and then you could add them to your list. That way, you're not intentionally leaving anyone out, but I feel like that could be, that could take a lot, a lot of time.
I got you. Any other comments? All right, so what I'll do for now, based on the feedback I got, is I'll just kind of advertise it up, saying we're having a big pizza party, and see if I can get some folks to attend. Sound good? Sound good? All righty. I will owe that $35. Next up, I have a request for council to have the city add city council members' social media pages to Page Freezer. What Page Freezer is, is a service that the city already pays for, for all their social media pages, because anything that's on there is now a public record that needs to be maintained. And as I, newly-elected person, I've found out, is my social media is now public record, and so is Member Muskoso's. So therefore, if I'm in my, acting as my official capacity, I feel that this needs to be done through the city, so there's a process in place, so that nothing can be missed or omitted. Conversations, discussions, member Stokel.
So this is funny timing. I had a meeting with our young elected municipal officials on Monday night, and we'd started talking about social media, and I have not had the chance to talk to the city attorney about this yet, but the city of Panama City Beach, they were on, and they shared, they just passed a resolution citing a case from the Supreme Court that happened last year, basically saying that only pages that are the official city page fall under those rules. And if you are not under the city, that is your personal page, and you have different rules. So I am very hesitant to do this at this moment, because I feel like that could open up another can of worms. I actually have their resolution printed out, because I just got it from Christine, she printed it for me earlier today, that it's looking like potentially the only page that would be subject to this is our official city of Titusville page. And if we choose to go off and talk about it, that could be deemed our own public, our own forums, not considered public. So I feel like there's still some things being considered through the courts, so I kind of would personally like to hold off a little bit on this one. Not to say that we don't do it right now, but after reading this resolution from Panama City Beach, I was like, oh, this is, this is rather interesting that they found that, no, unless you're actually the city's page, you're almost allowed to go and do what you need to do to engage citizens on your own, which I, I thought was interesting. So I personally would like to hold off on this, and maybe till next meeting.
Thank you, member Stokel. Any further discussion? All right, I just wanted to bring it up, make sure everybody was aware of it, so we can have, continue to have those dialogues. As always, I will remind council to review the rules of council, because that's the rules I enforce when I chair the meeting. So if you want to see rule changes, you know, you always have an opportunity to bring it up in your report. And with that, my report is finally done.
There's a couple that you missed. The authorization for Councilmember Muskoso to go to Florida League of Cities fast fly-in in Washington DC on 3 through 6 February.
I thought she was going to bring that up in her report, my bad. Member Muskoso, I'm sorry, member Stokel.
Yep, I was just going to say, I'm glad that Member Muskoso is going and representing us, so I will definitely be in favor of this.
Any further discussion? It is a--
Yeah, I will make that motion unless somebody needs to talk.
It was a request for funding to--
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any comments from Mr. Johnson there?
I have my approval.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
So one more is the civil mill dinner reimbursement.
How much was the dinner?
I thought you asked for that.
No, I asked for council to fund this civil mill membership.
Right, I thought you went to the dinner.
Yeah, was that a different price?
Uh huh.
Okay, you guys paid for the dinner?
Move to pay for the dinner.
I didn't know.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Oh, any comments? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Sorry, city manager. All right, that's my report. Who would like to go next? You guys reported out. Member Nelson.
Sort of reported it out, but I would like to see us revamp our applications for board membership. I think that application is probably eons old. It's at least eight years old, because they use the same ones for the last eight years. So I would like to see us add to it, sort of go through the statute, see what needs to be added. So I think it's important that we know about any criminal history. I think we need to know about any conflicts, potential conflicts. And that's not saying that the person's a bad person, but those are the things we need to know, because, especially with conflicts. You know, if, if somebody's going to be on a board, and 70% of what they hear, they're going to have a conflict, that becomes a problem. So I specifically like those things added, but I think probably time to redo it.
Is that the conclusion of your report, or would you like council to weigh in?
I'd like council to weigh in.
All right, thank you. Member Stokel.
Yep, that's what I was, I was going to ask, is what specifically did you want to revamp? I'm in favor of the criminal history. Potential conflicts, I don't know what that would look like. I think, for me, at least in the past, when we've gotten them, you can kind of see where do they work, you know, who are their references, what's their experience like? I don't know what a potential conflict would be, or what that would look like, I guess, would be my only question.
Yeah, I would add to, yeah, of course, have no financial conflicts of interest. You know, even looking at limiting industry representation, if we have a board, and we have, and I think we have that on some of ours, we like try to specify who we want. I would definitely think on certain boards, we would prohibit lobbyists, because we don't have that provision in right now. And one thing I would like us to see, and this doesn't have to be on the application, but, you know, prioritizing community involvement, those who have been actively involved in the community one way or another, whether it's coming to meetings, or supporting the community through different, you know, rotary, different clubs, I think that's something we should also be looking at, too.
Member Nelson.
I agree with you about knowing what the people, what kind of participation in the community they have, because I think that's important. I think the conflict is something subjective, and we're going to rely on that person to let us know if they feel like they're going to have a conflict.
City Attorney, do these boards like P&amp;Z, do they have a conflict of interest statement or that they sign when they join the board?
Well, what happens typically is a conflict of interest, most of the time is in a case-by-case, depending on the item you are hearing, and whether or not you have a conflict of interest under the law, because otherwise, if you're sitting on that board, by law, you must vote unless there is a conflict of interest, which is usually a financial gain or loss to the individual that's special. And that would be done a case-by-case. It sounds like what we're talking about is maybe something that would be a recurring conflict of interest, where they would, at the time of application, maybe disclose their, you know, their type of activities or business that may cause a recurring conflict, you know, where, to your point, if you're on a board and you're having to abstain a majority of the time, because you, of your business, maybe an engineer who's commonly in front of the board, that would be important to know. So I think we can add those to the questions of recurring conflicts or other types of conflicts for your consideration. And so if you would like us to look at the application and incorporate some of these things, we can certainly bring that back to you for further discussion at a future meeting.
Thank you, city attorney. And just to play devil's advocate here, I was a healthcare administrator, I hired a lot of folks, and we had to do background checks on people. That background check went in a sealed-on book, people couldn't see it. So I would just caution, like, if we're asking for background, and I know, I think Mr. Seaver has brought up, like, hey, you need a background check, these folks, I would be cautious, because then anything that we get, it would be a public record, and I'd be concerned about any potential blowback.
Like, I don't think the application would, it would be, have you been, typically, it's have you been convicted of felony? Have you had your civil rights restored?
Yeah.
You know, I know the city asked that question back in the 90s, and they took that out. Actually, the council took that question out in the 90s. But if we'd like to put that in, you know, we have, are you a registered voter? So we can include those items in the application for your review, and if you want to add to it, take away from it.
Yes, and I believe the registered voter question is what they substituted the felony question, because if they had a felony, they're going to be a registered voter.
Right.
So, Member Nelson?
I do want, would like to see that in. And I'll just point out that most of the time, I can go on the clerk club side and find out if somebody's got a record, so.
Yeah.
You know, it's not super hard these days with the internet.
Them internets.
Yep.
Member Muscoso?
Yeah, I would say on the Brevard County, they do include a lot of that information, and they, they ask, will you, you know, you're subject to a background check, those things. So I, I think that's kind of standard practice in our county, and I would agree, I'd like to see it.
Sure, you could say they're subject to that. You could also, you know, mention the fact they have to do financial disclosure forms and any other information you can put on the application, so people come in eyes wide open.
So we need a motion for advisability? Okay.
That's what you want to do.
That's what I'd like to do, then. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any folks in the audience want to chime in? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any further discussion on counsel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Anything else in your report?
That's it, other than, if you haven't seen the play at the theater, Jersey Boys is wonderful.
We can't get tickets to it.
They had two more shows, so.
Member Stokel?
Yes, just a couple items. One, I know that the City Manager mentioned that the EMO training was at capacity, I think, for our new members to go to, but I think there's one coming in March. I would just strongly recommend you go. I had a couple new council members reach out to me while they were attending, and they were like, this is great, I'm so glad I attended. So I would just encourage that. One is, can we move the March meeting, that is March 25th, to that Thursday, March 27th, to account for myself and the mayor and potentially Member Muscoso attending the Legislative Action Days? It is that Tuesday and Wednesday, so we would be going up on Monday and then having our meetings on Tuesday and Wednesday, so we would be back in time for the meeting on Thursday. So that would be my request.
Is that your motion?
Yes, I would like to move our March 25th meeting to March 27th.
I think on, sorry, on March 27th, we have the mock city council.
Is that when that is?
Hmm.
Okay.
Is there anything on the 26th? Oh, yeah, still gone. Uh huh, I won't be there.
Yeah.
All right, can we get advisability on the, for the next meeting and look at, figure out how we can-
Yes, yes. I would just, yes, if we can potentially move that to another date.
How about the Monday, is the Monday, are you gone on Monday?
Yeah, so we would leave Monday, and then we have meetings first thing on Tuesday morning and in Tallahassee.
Because that would only leave two of us here, so, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I think Wednesday would be cutting it close with when we would get back. Okay, so I guess my motion would be for advisability on another date for that council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion from the outside world? All right, seeing none, any further comments from counsel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion approved. Thank you.
And then just two more things real quick. One, since this went a little bit longer than I anticipated, I would like to, at our next council meeting, maybe to come back and say, each of us kind of take that opportunity to share what our top priority would be, so we can try to get on the same page about some things. So that's my request for our next meeting. And then lastly, I'm excited to see our community engagement meetings, that's something we were doing. I did want to see if there was an update from staff on the potential survey and where we are in that process.
Yeah, we are in the process of putting a RFP together to get it out.
So it hasn't gone out yet?
No.
Okay, do we have an anticipated date for when that will go out?
I don't.
Okay, that would be, I would like to see that go out relatively soon. Did you guys hear that? No, it's okay. I'm, I was asking when our RFP is going out for the survey for citizen engagement. It hasn't gone out yet. My, we don't have a date for when it's going out. I would request that we kind of push that, so we can have some of that feedback for our planning, for our budget. So, yeah. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Members Stokel. Vice Mayor Cole?
My only item that I have is I have a soft spot in my heart for the unhoused, and I was really concerned during the cold snap that we've had. So as a consequence, there's only two shelters in Brevard County, and one is in Titusville, and that's Life Point Ministries. And our Rotary Club gave a thousand dollars to them last week, and, well, we didn't give the money to them, they rathered us go out and buy the individual items, the gloves, the underwear, and all of those things. So we did that last week for them. And I was amazed that we only have two shelters in all of Brevard County. And, you know, it was cold for about two and a half weeks, and I couldn't imagine, I would walk outside and walk right back in. And to have to sleep out there in those, under those conditions, I mean, I don't know what to do about it, but I'm happy that one of the shelters is in Titusville, and that's provided by Life Point Ministries.
And they're actually open more often than the rest of the county.
Mm-hmm.
So, anything else, Vice Mayor Cole?
No, it's, thank you.
Member Muscoso?
I'll pass. I think there's a lot of people that would like to speak.
I got you. All right, moving on to item number 16.
Right, the City Attorney's Report 16, this is 16A, the update on the City of Titusville litigation with Speak Up Titusville.
Counsel, I stated in your report, on December 26, 2024, the Fifth District Court of Appeal entered an order in favor of the City of Titusville. The order stated that consistent with the holding of our sister court in Wild Cypress, we conclude the charter amendment is in conflict with and thus preempted by Section 403.4129A. We reverse the summary judgment entered in favor of Speak Up and remand with instructions to enter summary judgment in favor of the city on its claim of express preemption. That was the ruling from the Fifth District Court of Appeal. On January 9, 2025, Speak Up Titusville, Inc. has filed a corrected motion for rehearing and certification, asking the court to rehear this matter or to certify the question raised as one of great public importance. The city has recently filed its response to the motion for rehearing and certification. I didn't have, receive it in time to get it into your published agenda, therefore, that's what I have handed out now, is hard copies of that. So the status then is that the Fifth District Court will consider the rehearing certification question raised by Speak Up Titusville. I don't have, you know, a time when we know that the court will rule on that, but we'll just keep you updated when we do receive a ruling on the motion for rehearing. And I believe there are cards on this item.
City Clerk?
We have two cards. Robin Ricker?
I want to thank the council for questioning the legitimacy-
Ms. Robin, can you give me your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Robin Ricker, 3855 Weathersfield Circle, Titusville.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to thank the council for questioning the legitimacy of the so-called Clean Water Constitutional Amendment. Everyone wants clean water. The public was ill-informed when voting on this. The council needs a better way of informing the public on matters like these ahead of any voting. I understand you're doing, working on something like that now, but we didn't then. This initiative should have been titled Feed the Attorneys Amendment, because actually, that's all it does. It actually reduces the amount of money the city has to spend on our clean water and raises our taxes to pay for judgments issued by a judge. Who do you think's going to pay for those judgments? We will, the taxpayer. Our taxpa, taxes that go out to cover all this. I want to thank the council members for taking a stand to protect taxpayers against these kinds of increases that simply pay attorneys and still accomplish nothing. I want, I know you care about the community you live in. I encourage the community who watches on video to email and call our council members to let them know they support them continuing to take a stand against this. Too often, all they hear are complaints about the same, from the same people. Many are just self-promoting activists. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Robin. City Clerk?
The last card is Dan Johnston.
This is a picture of my dad, but I'm not going to talk about him right now. On Jan, on October the 20, 24th, 2023, I had written a, an email, accompanied a number of people, including the police officer, Mr. Logan, and it was explained about the State Watch number, order number that was on this issue, the FDOT number, the work order on this, and the Titusville Police Case number on it. And I wrote it to, I sent it to the officer in charge, and he gave it no recognition whatsoever. And then, and then of all, of all things happening, just after I talked to his supervisor, he said, who said, I'm not going to be arrested, a few minutes, a few, very soon thereafter, I was arrested, by surprise.
Mr. Johnson?
And this has to do with a sewage, this has to do with a sewage flow, it has to do with clean water.
Mr. Johnson, I'm asking you what this has to do with the litigation and appeal.
Oh, in other words, what I'm giving you, yes, thank you for that. The reason is, is that this is a serious issue, and the City of Titusville is ignoring completely the Titusville Police Department story, and you guys, and I'm letting you know is that I was arrested, falsely arrested, not even told I was arrested, on this same matter of sewage spill in the same place that we had it. And FDOT even asked, asked the city, I and FDOT asked, asked the city to test it, and they didn't do it. Instead, what they did was they put me in jail, and they didn't even tell me what I was arrested for. So I'm just giving you an example of how much dirty, dirty tricks the city is doing to stop me, watch for, fight for zero, clean water, the, right, clean water and so forth. You are gone, oh, you've gone way overboard to, out of, out of limits, and even went to the Titusville Police Department, harassed Stella Bailey in Port St. John over this matter. You've gone crazy, crazy, crazy out of this. So that's why I'm letting you know, is that, is that you guys have no right to doing what you're doing. And it's, it's really ugly, and the, and the, and you're not even doing the, you're illegally not, anyhow, you're breaking the law. So thank you. I'll let it go at that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk?
We've received an additional card from Tony Shifflow.
Shifflow, Tropic Street. I was going to speak this during petitions. I would like to quote from the appellate court ruling that they say, "We recognize the overwhelming support of this charter amendment by the residents of the City of Titusville and the admirable policies of the amendment. However, the legislature in drafting Section 403.4129A of the Environmental Protection Act," that's an oxymoron, "has not authorized the types of rights provided for in the charter amendment. As such, an appellate court has no power to change or alter what the legislature mandated." That's why it was turned down, not on the merits of the amendment, nor on the fact that the public was misled, Ms. Robin. The public knew what they were voting on, because the people that were collecting the signatures on the petitions spoke with the people and talked with them. The petitions, the over 4,000, were not raised by a third party that was paid to collect petitions. It was citizens of Titusville who wanted to get some standing, legal standing, so that they could go against, not the city council, it's not you people sitting here. That's a misinformation, and it's an outright lie, that the intention is to feed the pockets of the lawyers. It was to give standing so that we could go after the bad permiters, the DEP, the St. John's Water Management, who do, unlike what you talked about this evening, about not looking at this piece and saying, okay, and then this piece and saying, okay, but looking at the whole gestalt, looking at the whole picture, and seeing how things are going to happen, and what, granting this permit for some really overcrowded multifamily, I would prefer to use multi-unit, because some of the things that are being proposed to be built in this town are not for families, they're just multi-units, multi-rental units. So I think that the whole, right to clean water was not to sue the city for the misfortunate fact that some shoddy work has been done in the past, and that our infrastructure is very old, but in order to do things to help get the river cleaned up, to save the environment, and I do not believe at all that the citizens, the 83% of the people who voted, were mistaken or misled. They are being misinformed now after the fact. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shifflow. Any other cards? I'm, I'm sorry, I was clapping, I couldn't hear you. All right. Did you put in a card?
No, I have, I wanted to comment on trash.
Oh, you have to wait for pub, public petitions and requests. We're talking about the litigation in the City Attorney's Report.
Okay, but you didn't make it clear when you were done on that subject, so I can't talk about two different issues, can I?
No, we're just talking about this issue right now. We'll get, get to you. City Attorney?
That's all having that issue, unless you have any questions.
Any questions from counsel? Seeing none?
The next you, item you have in your report is a receipt of a final order modifying conditions of certification for the Cape Canaveral Energy Center. The Department of Environmental Protection initiated modifications to the conditions incorporating a uniform set of conditions consistent with site certifications and to update antiquated conditions no longer applicable or consistent with current regulations associated with that Canaveral Energy Center. My office received a copy of the final order, and I've provided that to you for your information. Within the order, it gives the right to parties to appeal the order if they're so inclined within 30 days.
Any questions from counsel?
If you have any questions, I-
I'll see any, City Attorney?
The next item I was asked to provide counsel was information on House Bill 1365, laws of Florida 2024-11, which is the unauthorized public camping and public sleeping legislation. This, this legislation was enacted and established Section 125.0231 of the Florida statutes and is entitled to public camping and public sleeping. The statute prohibits municipalities from authorizing any person from regularly engaging in public camping or sleeping on any public property, public building, or public right-of-way, unless the county designates a property for such purposes. The prohibition applies to residing overnight with or without a tent. It does not apply to residing overnight in a registered or insured motor vehicle, which is parked in a lawful place, nor does it apply to camping for recreational purposes on property designated for such purpose. As shown in the report, public camping or sleeping is defined as lodging or residing overnight in a temporary outdoor habitation, used as a dwelling or living space and evidenced by the erection of a tent or other temporary shelter, the presence of bedding or pillows, or the storage of personal belongings, or the lodging or residing overnight in an outdoor space without a tent or other temporary shelter. As we just stated, the law provides that the county may designate property owned by the county or a municipality within the county to be used for a continuous period of no longer than one year for the purposes of public camping or sleeping. If the designated property is within the city, the designation requires the concurrence of city council. The county designation also requires certification by the Department of Children and Families, and the county must establish and maintain minimum standards and procedures on the property related to ensuring safety, security, sanitation, mental health, substance, substance abuse services coordination, and illegal substance and alcohol use prohibitions. To date, Brevard County has chosen not to designate a property for public camping. The law further provides that a resident of the county, an owner of a business located in the county, or the Attorney General may bring a civil action against the county or municipality to enjoin a violation of this law. If they prevail, the court may award reasonable expenses, including court costs, reasonable attorney's fees, investigation costs, witness fees, and deposition costs. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, City Attorney. Any questions from counsel? Member Muscoso?
This might be a question for Chief Lau, but I, I think they're going to be the ones who are handling the bulk of this, and so I'm just curious to see how we're going to partner with some of our nonprofits and how we can support them through this process, because right now, I went over to Under the Bridge, and I know that, you know, they've, they're having a lot of issues with funding. The county is now charging them to rent the pavilions, and so as a city, if we can, instead of being re- And so as a city, if we can, instead of being reactive, how can we be proactive to this happening? And how can we also support our police officers? Because it's putting them in a really difficult position.
Also, I wanted to let counsel know, we do currently have, and we have had for many years, an ordinance on camping on public property. But that will have to be modified to be consistent with this current law. So I want to let you know, you will see an ordinance coming back to you to modify our current ordinances to coincide with the definitions created by the law.
Any other questions from counsel? Thank you, City Attorney.
The next item on the agenda, a couple of meetings ago, there were some questions about trucks on local roads, particularly construction or larger trucks traveling on local roads, and what options may be available. I provide you a memo, and what we addressed there is Chapter 316 of the Florida statutes, which is the Florida Uniform Traffic Control, Traffic Control Law. And of course, the legislature enacted that to make uniform, as stated in the title, all traffic laws to apply throughout the state, the several counties, and uniform traffic ordinances to apply in all municipalities. So the really goal there was to have a uniform traffic control. However, the legislature did recognize that there are conditions which require municipalities to pass certain other traffic ordinances to regulate municipal traffic as expressly specified in that statute. And that statute enumerates the areas within where we are authorized to control certain traffic movement on local roads. In your memorandum, I've got a copy of that statute. And it does provide authority to municipalities with respect to streets under your jurisdiction, city roads, with reasonable exercise of police power to regulate traffic in the following subsections there, which relate to public health, safety, and welfare of residents on their particular road. One of those is restricting use of streets. As I've stated in my memorandum, we found that there are certain local governments that have created ordinances establishing what they call no-through truck zones, that prohibit trucks from traveling our particular roads provided certain criteria are met, as long as there's a provided alternative route of travel. In other words, as long as they can still reach their destination, there may be situations that the city feels are appropriate for these no-through truck zones. And I've given you an example of one city that did that, was Benita Springs, others have followed suit with that. What they do is, they say, you know, if there are certain criteria such as traffic lanes are less than 12 feet wide, a street or road cannot adequately carry truck traffic because of damage to the surface or abutting structures, if the land use on both sides of the street is predominantly residential, the character of greater right-of-way is pedestrian nature. If these criteria are established, you could allow someone to come in and petition you to have that road through their neighborhood, for example, a no-through truck zone. And doing that, it would require them to find an alternate route to get where they're going, as long as one is provided. Another example, as I pointed out here, some local governments require a traffic control plan in their land development code, which will require developers to manage traffic flow and safety during construction with regard to large new development. And on that development site, they would include details like construction routes, lane closure, signage, flagging procedures, hours of operation, traffic control measures, and these would be in place to ensure smooth movement of vehicles while minimizing disruptions to existing traffic patterns. So you could look at two of those options, your code, with regard to the no-through truck zones. You could look at maybe something in your development code that would require them, when they do their site review with staff, to address the ingress egress, the parking, where these large vehicles will be traveling, and have it a requirement of part of their site plan that we've addressed those issues. That's one way to look at that. Next in the memorandum, I cite Section 316.515, which is maximum width, height, and length, wherein that provides that cities may restrict the use of your local roads by vehicles exceeding 96 inches in width on public roads that do not have at least one through lane of 12 feet or more in width in each direction. And the use of such public roads are deemed unsafe for wider vehicles on the basis of a safety and engineering analysis with respect to those streets under your jurisdiction. A second section, 316.555, is titled, "Weight, Load, Speed Limits May Be Lowered, Condition Precedent." This law provides that the city may prescribe by notice load and weight and speed limits lower than the limits prescribed by the Uniform Traffic Laws with respect to streets and highways under your jurisdiction, local roads, whenever in city's judgment such regulation or prohibition is necessary to provide for public safety and convenience on your roads by reason of traffic density, intensive use. And of course, they have to be, there have to be exemptions for garbage collection vehicles, local delivery, deliveries, transportation of agricultural goods or equipment to or from residential or commercial properties. So these are some of the options you have as a city. So if counsel wants to give any direction based on this, we can certainly come back with some of these in the future for your consideration.
Thank you, City Attorney. Counsel? Member Nelson?
I think I like the one where they have to come up with some restrictions during the site plan and come up with a route. I think that was one of the choices. I think that would make the most sense.
If you're interested, I think might be set an agenda item where staff can talk to you about what the code currently is on that.
Okay.
And what they currently do. Because that's more of a planning function, and based on that discussion, you might want to give us advisability to come up with a code that does X, Y, Z. But, but I would suggest maybe that's something that you could set an agenda item for your staff, planning staff to address with you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Member Stokoe?
Yep, that's kind of where I was going with this as well. I think this got brought up to us because of a proposed development, so I think that's where we're having the issue. And again, to kind of focus in staff on what's needed at the time, I think that potentially having planning staff look at this and say, what can be part of the application process to include that would be the direction I'd want to go in.
Thank you, Member Stokoe. My concern is, since we're addressing this one particular instance that was brought up, I feel that we have a lot of through trucks kind of coming through town, off Singleton's one of those, and I feel like our local roads are not meant to bear the weight of some of those trucks as they try to exit on the north end of US-1 to cut around a train, you know? So I'm also cognizant of that, because if you go down Singleton, you get a little, it's a little hilly, right? So we got to also keep in mind on our infrastructure and our tax dollars and protect those. So again, that's just my initial thoughts, and again, opening up to the rest of counsel. Member Nelson? What do you want to do?
Your proposal is great. I think I've, is that it? We're all Herman. I think this would take two separate actions. I'd like to have an agenda item laying out what we can do during site review, and let planning and zoning tell us what, what they're doing now, what their ordinances will allow, what we can do. And the second item is, I would like to see some restrictions on the truck use on some of our streets, our public streets, which I think Barnet is another one, between 50 and 407, where you have some really heavy trucks using that as a shortcut. And I'm not sure if our roads are capable of handling that. So I would like to have us, have an ordinance allowing us to designate certain roads as no-through trucks kind of areas.
So if I, if I heard you correctly, we got two separate advisabilities, one on the site planning side of things, and then one on our no-through trucks, or whatever we want to call it, right? You know, to kind of limit those and protect our local roads. Is that correct?
You interpret me right.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion, Member Muscoso?
Yes, would this be something that we could perhaps send to the Planning and Zoning Commission to have them, because there are going to be implications in the process? And so having them look at it and giving us their, their thoughts. I mean, we have Taggerard on that board, who is a wealth of knowledge, and I would really love to hear his opinion and his thoughts on it, and then kind of bringing it back to us.
Well, I have a motion, and I have a second. City Attorney, what would you like to add?
No, I was going to suggest, you know, we could send the memo to them and get their thoughts, and then as well as if you do, and I don't want to clarify on the motion, are you asking us to come back with an ordinance for your consideration on the through truck zones, or are you wanting more discussion on that?
For the through truck, excuse me, for the three, through truck zones, I'd like to have a proposed ordinance.
Okay, then, if we're going to do that, one, one question to Member Muscoso is, do we want input from the P&amp;Z prior to preparation, or would you rather us draft an ordinance based on the one that's in the memo and have the ordinance go to P&amp;Z?
I wouldn't say for the through, through truck zone, we would need that to go to P&amp;Z, but I think the, yeah, for the site plan, I would like that one to go through P&amp;Z, or if you could send the memo to them.
Okay. So before, of course, before you vote, we'll take cards, but if that's the direction and you end up voting that, we'll come back with the draft ordinance of the.
All right. So just to clarify, just so everybody's on the same page, we have a motion to have the City Attorney prepare an ordinance in protecting our local roads with no-through truck zones. And we also have another item, which is, as part of the site planning, making sure that they're diverting their construction vehicles appropriately. And we're also going to have that go to the P&amp;Z for their thoughts. They could probably come back to us both at the same time. Any comments from the crowd? All right. Any further comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, counsel. City Attorney?
Last item on my report. I was asked to come back with information regarding charter review committees, and counsel is interested in, in what others are doing in the city and in the county with regard to charter review committees, and things to consider. So as you see in the memorandum, when adopting a resolution, if you want to establish a charter review committee, there are several issues that you should consider. Number of members to be appointed, requirements of membership, the term of the committee, because you'll have, you know, they'll have to reach certain milestones if they're wanting to perform their duties in time to get something on a ballot. Rules of procedure governing how the committee operates its meetings, and of course, anytime you have a committee like this, they're going to be subject to sunshine and public records. So of course, the members won't be able to speak to each other outside of the meeting on things that are coming before them. You will have staff assigned to any kind of charter review committee as well. To date, Brevard County, Cocoa Beach, Palm Bay, and Cape Canaveral, to my knowledge, have utilized charter review committees to review their county and city charters, and to make recommendations to the governing bodies on proposed amendments to the charters. The city of Melbourne Beach is currently in the process of creating a charter review committee. According, attached to this memo is resolutions from these various local municipalities to illustrate ways in which they have established charter review committees. Some do them because their charter requires it. You know, the city of Tidesville, our charter currently doesn't require a charter review committee. City Council can choose to utilize a committee to provide proposed amendments for your consideration in order to forego the use of such committee and do a workshop or some other way you want to receive comments with regard to your charter. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, City Attorney. Obviously, this came up because this was one of the first things I wanted to do. We have no process in place. While we, as council members, can suggest charter amendments, and if counsel agrees, they'll go on a ballot. But I feel like the best place for this is with our citizens and getting engagement from our community. So you can see these meetings go late. We don't have time for adequate discussion to discuss the, you know, all the intricacies and do these things. So this is an opportunity for us as a city government to walk and chew gum at the same time. While counsel is dealing with the issues pressed before us, we have a group of citizens actively working and looking at our formal government. And just the first act they should look at is putting the charter review process in the charter. That's my take. I'll now leave it open to counsel. Member Stokoe?
Um, I'm not sure personally I'm ready for this. And the reason I say that is, again, I don't know, I know when I first got on counsel, you know, eight years ago, I got a copy of the charter, but since then, we have not discussed it as a council at all. And so for me personally, maybe we go down this path, but before we just immediately jump into it, I would personally like for us to have discussion and review the charter, and then potentially look at hosting a workshop with community members about it. Just because as a city attorney kind of was going over everything, there's sunshine law, there's certain things, I would want us to make sure that we're comfortable and we've discussed the charter as a council first, before we just go and say, hey, here's a committee that I'm not even sure how we would form yet, and say, look at this, before we've kind of looked through it and discussed some of the things that we're seeing, and then what potentially, I don't know, have a workshop with the community and see what their thoughts are on things. And then from that, we may determine, yeah, this is a need. I'm just, I feel like we're finally getting our groove down with our advisory boards, and I am a little reluctant to just kind of add to that. I don't know, I don't want to overburden us and potentially staff with this at the moment. I'm all for looking at it and having the discussion, I just don't know if I'm personally ready for that yet.
Member Nelson?
I sort of felt like we needed to sit down and read the charter. I, I will confess, I haven't read it, read it in probably four years. And to read it and see what we think, see what we see needs to be changed, what we don't like, and have that discussion among us before we run off to a charter review I mean, yeah. And, and if we were to do that, I would say we need to be very careful about who we pick. I like the idea of Cocoa Beach, each person picks one, one individual for the committee, but I think it needs to be somebody who has been involved, say, our ex-mayor Diesel, Joe Robinson, the, now Jim Tully, those kind of people who have a good working knowledge of what's going on. But before we get there, I would rather see us read it and have a discussion on it.
Thank you, Member Nelson. And that was kind of the conversations that were had with former mayors, is, you know, they, they run into challenges, you know. So the City Attorney said, "We can't do this because of the charter." I did bring this up with former Mayor Tully, and he was extremely interested in, you know, an opportunity to go through this with a fine-tooth comb. So again, it's just that the process of putting it in place. It's not necessarily that we're going to make sweeping changes, it's just the process so that there is something set to review. So, Member Muscoso?
Yeah, I personally would like to hold off and just have a little bit more time to review the charter. I am slowly going through it and trying to understand, so I don't even have anything that I would say, yes, I want that changed at this point. But I am curious, what are the things that you are looking to change in the charter?
I don't have anything in particular that I'm trying to change, except for to put the charter review in the, the process. I think that's something that just needs to be looked at as our town evolves. Like, a fair question to ask is, is five council members enough for our growing city? Is it seven? Like, when, when is that time? Again, it's not for me to answer, I think it's for the citizens to answer. I felt like during the campaign, you know, there's 34,000 registered voters, I couldn't get out to them all. How am I supposed to represent them? You know, again, I feel like that is a challenge. So again, those are questions I feel like that is what our citizens can hopefully help answer for us as we look to the future. So again, I'm just wanting to put the process in place, not trying to change our government and burn it down. So. Member Nelson?
Got that. But I still think that, you know, we're talking about jumping hoops, creating a process, we're talking about extra time, extra money, because anytime we do this, you're talking about advertising cost, blah, blah, blah. And to be honest with you, if we look at the charter, we all read it, we all go, there's nothing we really want to change. I'd rather take that money and use it for something else, because there's always those priorities. Infrastructure, to me, has always been a priority, because I look at the infrastructure, and I think if I fix the infrastructure, the lagoon is a better fort. So to me, there are other needs within the community that I would rather. So, to me, there are other needs within the community that I would rather address. So, before we spend money, jump hoops, I'd rather have us read it and have a discussion on it.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Vice Mayor Cole.
And I totally agree with that. I think that we ought to give ourselves some homework to go ahead and read it. And if we've got problems with it, then give ourselves a month. You know, say, a month from now, we'll come back and each one of us, if we see things that we want to talk about, then we come out and it would be an agenda item. And then, we can talk about it. And then, the public can comment on the statements that we've made. But I think it's something that needs to be done.
All right. Any other discussion? So, I believe there is no motion, there is no second. Thank you, City Attorney, for the information.
Wait a minute. If we're going to make it an agenda item in a month or six weeks, can I have six weeks?
Yes. How about I bring it up in every meeting and remind you to read it?
That would work.
We can make it an agenda item, so we need a motion.
So, we would make a motion to make that an agenda item in six weeks, plus or minus a week.
Yeah.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any public comments? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anybody else seeing none? Counsel, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, City Attorney. Well done. There was a lot of reading today tonight for you. I'm sorry.
On to new business, item 12A. This is the invocation at regular city council meetings. At the regular city council meeting on January 14th, 2025, council provided visibility to discuss having an invocation versus a moment of silence at the regular city council meetings at 6:30. Prior to 2020, staff prepared a letter signed by the mayor at the end of each calendar year addressed to the community religious leaders inviting area churches to give an invocation at the beginning of the regular city council meetings, second and fourth Tuesdays at 6:30. Letter provided dates of the regular city council meetings for the upcoming year, and the leaders were asked to contact staff if they were interested in participating in the invocation. In the past, only a few leaders participated and would sign up for several dates throughout the year. 2019, nine leaders signed up to provide an invocation for 13 meetings. When the leader was not present at the meeting, city council would hold a moment of silence. Following 2020, during the pandemic, staff no longer mailed the letter out inviting area churches to participate in the invocation to reduce the number of individuals in city council chambers during the meetings and the pandemic. During this time, a moment of silence was held in place of the invocation. The city continued with a moment of silence up to this date. In addition to the previous city council discussed this item on September 10th, 2024, and the motion to approve guidelines, criteria for invocations provided by staff failed 3-2, therefore, the motion of silence was continued. The minutes of that sub-meeting are attached. The previous proposed guidelines, criteria, and procedures are also attached. Should the city council determine to continue with a moment of silence, staff recommends changing the section of the code to reflect a moment of silence will be held versus an invocation. If council determines to continue with the invocation as completed in the past 2020, staff will prepare a signed letter by the mayor to invite area churches to participate in the invocation.
Thank you, City Manager. Time for discussion. Ms. Stokel.
I'm the one that brought this up. So, I think that we all know where I stand on this. I would like to see us do what we did prior to the pandemic and have the mayor send out a letter inviting the churches to participate and us to go back to an invocation.
Vice Mayor Cole.
My major concern on this one is that you can't discriminate on what religion would come forth. And that's why I really like the moment of silence. Because with the moment of silence, you have the opportunity to pray to whoever you believe you need to pray to. I mean, we believe one thing, someone else may believe something else. I am a little bit concerned that we may be opening Pandora's Box for this. And that would be my concern on having ministers come and speak for three minutes at our meetings. My only, that's my only drawback on that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Nelson.
I have two problems with it. The first is, when we tried it last time, over half the time, nobody showed up. So, it was sort of the same people over and over again. Second problem I have with it is we cannot discriminate. And just being nosy, I looked it up. The Church of Satan, reverse baptisms. And they actually had a meeting, I think it was in Boston, 800 people attending. We can't discriminate against them, but somebody shows up and says, I represent the Church of Satan. What do we say? How are we, how are our citizens going to feel about that? So, to me, I'd rather have a moment of silence where we all got to pray to whichever God we believed in, as opposed to opening up to something like that. So, that's my thought. And so, I just, I cringe at the idea of opening up to everybody. I'd rather have us have a moment with our God and talk to him.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Stokel.
Yep, just to, I understand those concerns. I would just reiterate, prior to this, in 2020, we did not have any issues. And should we have potential issues where there would be situations where certain members felt uncomfortable by who potentially would show up, we could always bring this back before council. So, I feel like it's worth the risk. It was something nice that we did. I really appreciated us having more of a relationship with our community. And again, if there is a potential issue, we can always come back here and change our process. So, I would like to still move forward with it.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Moscoso.
Yeah, so my husband is a pastor. So, prayer is a very important part of our lives. But I do think that if we were to go down this route, that it would have to be open to all faiths and all belief systems, and we'd have to be okay. And when I was looking at kind of the notes from before and how we were able to send it to churches, it says that we compiled a list using the Real Yellow Pages telephone book. And so, that made me giggle because that's how we were doing it. But perhaps, you know, an option would be to have, you know, a signup. And then, and I was talking with our city attorney. So, you don't have someone that says, well, I'm a church, and there's really no representation. But perhaps there's, you're a 501(c)(3), you're registered as a church, and then you can, you know, possibly sign up. And I think our board has been really active in engaging the community to get them on different boards. So, if perhaps we want groups to come up, or pastors, or different leaders in the community, we can also go out to them and say, you know, under the bridge ministries, you represent part of our community, would you come and give the prayer? Things like that. So, I'm not against it. I just think that we definitely have to be open, and we have to be okay with whoever wants to come up and pray.
Thank you, Member Moscoso. Any further, you still have something? Okay. I was just making sure I wasn't talking over you. Any further discussion from council? Any cards?
Yes, sir. We have several. Robin Wicker.
Robin Ricker, 3855 Weathersfield Circle, Titusville. Although the First Amendment doesn't explicitly quote separation of church and state, the founding fathers intended a separation of church and state, not from church and state. The Declaration of Independence includes a reference to God as the author of the laws of nature and that human beings are endowed by their creator with certain inalienable rights. Prayer acknowledges God and sets a standard of personal conduct for people to follow. It promotes understanding and a coming together of the community. I've watched too many government meetings where personal attacks are lobbed against governing members. Too often, people come into these meetings with an us against them attitude. I believe starting our meetings out with prayer instead of a simple moment of silence can remind everyone we answer to a higher power. It sets a tone of coming together. I realize many of you, going back to prayer at opening your meetings, is regressive and a setback. It's not. It's simply being able to, how do you say it? It's simply being able to admit that you're mature enough, that you've made a mistake, and you're willing to correct it. I do understand your point of view with Satanism. You've got to leave it in the hands of God. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Ms. Robin. City Clerk.
Barbara Fine.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. Thank you for all that you do for our city. We appreciate it. And I'm just thankful that you brought this up. I didn't realize that we didn't have an invocation. We've had it for years and years. And most ever, every government body that meets does have an invocation, and they take that risk of whoever, I mean, they do line up. Like you said, it would be great to have a schedule and people signed up and committed to it. And I do think we have enough churches in our area that would commit to this. And I remember years ago, I've been here so many years, I am, did I say my name? I'm Barbara Fine, 527 Hendrick River Avenue. Lived right behind City Hall since 1971. So, but I just want to thank you, and I wish you would reconsider doing this. We can all have a silent moment, even with someone else praying. You know, we can be silent. But I do thank you. And like you said, you may open a Pandora's Box, but as Robin said, we like leave it with God. And we do want, it does set a mood for a meeting, and it does put a spiritual covering, I believe, because the pastors do pray before they are here. But thank you all, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara.
Sandy Jankovic. I probably pronounced that wrong.
Hi, you sit right. Hello, good evening. Sandy Jankovic, 415 Bellevista Drive in Titusville. I'm here to support this as well. And I just want to say, the reason why it was the First Amendment, because I think it is the most important amendment. We do have freedom of religion, and we should be able to express it. And we shouldn't be intimidated or scared that a church of Satan is going to come up here. Because I believe that most of the people who would see that, if that were to ever happen, would pray for them. And God willing, we'll take a soul from Satan, okay? We'll save them. And I believe in the power of prayer. I believe when two or more are gathered, he's in our midst. And I don't think that anybody should back down or be scared or intimidated by the fact that that could happen. And I think if you do put into effect the 503, it should probably eliminate most of that. And I just believe that half of the people in Titusville vote the way they do because they believe in God and they believe in the power of prayer. And we believe in you. And I know you'll do the right thing. And I think we should vote for this and do not be intimidated and do not let him back you in a corner or make you back off of your beliefs. Because that's not what we should do. We should stand strong, stand proud in our religion and our beliefs. And I just want you to support it.
Thank you, Sandy. City Clerk.
Jonathan Burdette.
Jonathan Burdette, resident of Titusville. I'd like to share the words of Benjamin Franklin spoken during the Constitutional Convention in 1787. He said, "In the beginning of the contest with Britain, when we were sensible of danger, we had daily prayer in this room for the divine protection. Our prayers, sir, were heard, and they were graciously answered. All of us who engaged in the struggle must have observed frequent instances of a superintending providence in our favor. To that kind providence, we owe this happy opportunity of consulting in peace on the means of establishing our future national philosophy." We, and now, have we forgotten that powerful friend? Or do we imagine that we no longer need his assistance? He continued to say, "We have been assured, sir, in the sacred writings that, except the Lord build, they labor in vain that build it. I firmly believe this, and I also believe that without his concurring aid, we shall succeed in this political building no better than the builders of Babel. We shall be divided by our little partial local interests. Our projects will be confounded, and we ourselves shall become a reproach." Continuing, he said, "I therefore beg leave to move that henceforth prayers imploring the assistance of heaven and its blessings on our deliberations be held in this assembly every morning before we proceed to business, and that one or more of the clergy of this city be requested to officiate in that service." Counsel, I'll leave you with this. If prayer was vital to them as they worked to lay the foundation of this nation, how much more should we seek God's guidance in addressing the matters before us here in Titusville? Prayer humbles us, it unites us, and it helps us remember that we are here to serve a greater purpose than ourselves. Those that desire to pray have the right to do so, and those that are opposed also have the right to abstain. That is the freedom of religion our founding fathers envisioned. I urge this council to approve the change for an invocation and let us, like the founders, invite God's wisdom and blessing into our midst for our decisions for the good of this community. Thank you.
City Clerk.
Stan Johnston.
Okay, we don't need to bow our heads or anything, but, Lord, we come to you right now, and we ask for your wisdom. We ask for, and we thank you for what we have, we have with this country, we have with this city. Lord, we pray that we will be, for your glory, not our selfish glory, that we will seek your wisdom, and we seek your wisdom tonight in this issue. So, Lord, help us out tonight. Help us out tonight, and please help especially our council in the decision, and help all these other people who don't even believe in God. Those who are, and there are many of them, there's many people who don't believe in God. So, Lord, please be merciful upon them, and we'll do what we can to pray for them. And, Lord, just help us. Help us and help us to do the right thing. And everyone says?
Amen.
Amen. Okay. So, I'm concerned about, nobody brought up the thing about the councilwoman who brought in the Wicca priest, priest who spoke about, you know, they believe in, like, the goodness of good witches. So, well, it wasn't Satanism. They have a new witch called Wicca, a new religion called Wicca. And it's been around, I don't think it's been more around even 100 years or so, but it started over in England. And we had someone here to speak on that, and there was a lot of controversy. But the thing is, we have some Christian religions that are not very nice, like the Ku Klux Klan. That is actually a religion. And, but it's got some bad things about it. It's got some good things about it, but Ku Klux Klan, it's sad. But there's some sick people in this world, so we need to pray for them, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk.
The last card is Tony Shifalo.
I know this is not going to be a popular thing I'm saying. Shifalo Tropic Street. I said this before when this came up, that the way you're going to decide to get these preachers to come in here is you're going to go to the list of churches in the Yelp. And I noticed when I went through that, there were no synagogues, no mosques, no Buddhist temples, no monasteries, or any other kind of religious organizations that were in that list. So, your letter is going to only fall, I guess, on Baptists, Methodists, So, your letter is going to only fall, I guess, on Baptists, Methodists, and maybe a few Presbyterians, and heaven help us, a few Pentecostals. I think that a moment of silence, a minute of silence in the room, it, it serves the same, to me, that prayer seems to serve to everybody else. The minute of silence, it's dignified, it gives us a chance to be reflective, it's calming in the room in the preparation for the coming meeting, because Stan is right, or somebody said, "A lot of us come in here ready to rumble." And that minute of, of just in the room, being reflective, maybe you're praying, maybe you're praying to your God, maybe someone else is praying to Allah. When it's being done out loud, it forces everyone to follow the same inclination, and not everyone does. And I know it's not cool in this country anymore to be inclusive, but it sure would be nice in our little town to be inclusive of our Jewish friends, of our Muslim neighbors, of our Buddhist people. Then let's don't pray out loud at a city meeting, for heaven's sake.
Thank you, Ms. Shifflow. City Clerk?
Last card, no more cards.
Thank you. Further discussion from council, Member Muskoso?
Yeah, I would just like to clarify, there is nothing good about the KKK, and I just have to say that. Other than that, I do like the idea of having an open online forum or something that people can come in and sign up for. I feel like that makes it open for everyone, and I do think that if you are going through the Yellow Pages, you're going to hit a lot of churches, which there's nothing wrong with that, but just to have people have the opportunity to come in and to share, I think I would be more in favor with that.
Thank you, Member Muskoso. Member Stokel?
Yeah, I don't know if I'd want it to be open for everyone as much as I would want it to be, the city attorney and I were talking earlier today, as he's doing more research on it, maybe someone that has an established presence, so it's not just somebody walking off the street, it's, there's some type of presence. So, I would be in favor of that. So, I guess my motion would be that we move forward. I guess, can I ask, city attorney, would you want to have some time to draft something to bring back to us?
If, if council's inclination is to move forward, I would suggest the direction would be to come back with a policy for your review and approval.
Okay.
And that policy would outline the process. It would outline if we're going to, you know, looking at some of the others that do this, you're going to have a, direct the clerk on how she's going to send the letter out, as well as the option to go online and to sign up. The key is that it is inclusive. The key is you cannot categorically exclude any religion. So, I could come back with a policy for your review that would set forth that process, and to make sure that, you know, churches, synagogues, you know, all those religions with an established presence in our community would be given that opportunity, as well as an opportunity for those that may not have received such notice to sign up and be welcome to come, get on the list, and come in and give an invocation, so that you're sure that you are inclusive. So, if that's the direction, it would be, in my opinion, to come back with a policy for your consideration. And I would probably do a resolution adopting that policy, setting forth the things we've talked about and providing that process.
Okay. So, that would be my motion, is to direct the city attorney to come back with a policy for us to review.
I have a motion.
A second.
I have a motion and I have a second. I might ask for further discussion of council. The only thing I would like to include is, I would be hesitant to put an online forum, because I feel like we get a lot of out-of-town activists trolling our website. You know, I get a lot of automatic emails to the website from activist groups, because they saw a video online of, you know, 10 years ago, and they're mad at the police in Titusville. So, I'd be hesitant on that. I believe our nickname back in the day was like Church City, you know? I don't, I don't have a very good arm, and I can't throw a rock without hitting a church in this town. So, I think there's plenty of established presence of churches in our community that we could definitely fill a bench of folks that we can invite. And as you can see, council's actively recruiting for volunteers at every level, so I'm excited to help lead that charge if necessary. And to Ms. Shifflow's point, on Sunday at the Astronaut Memorial Ceremony, I did run into a rabbi here locally, and he was very excited about the notion. So, that is just my thoughts, my opinion on it. I do have a motion, I do have a second. We've already taken cards. Clerk, can you call the roll?
Member Muskoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
No.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
No.
And Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. City Attorney, one last question for you on this resolution. Will we have to amend the rules of council? Is it, I know it lays out the agenda and order.
It's still listed as a.
It's still there. It's still listed as invocation, so, okay. It's just on our agenda, it says moment of silence. Got you. Cool. All right.
Onto 12B, which is advisability to amend the list of uses for public zoning district. The public zoning district prohibits several nonprofit uses. Activities such as vocational schools, community centers, community service, convention centers, and other public uses are not permitted. Schools are permitted in the P zoning district. The staff is requesting approval to research and this issue and provide alternatives to city councils for your consideration.
All righty. So, I'll kick off the discussion. I had a meeting with Jackie Reason, who runs a nonprofit out of the Gibson Center. Her whole goal is, she has a vocationary educational training seminar, you know, to get people in the cooking profession, and the challenge they have is, once they want to graduate, you know, go out in the real world, right? And it's tough. So, the, the idea behind it is they'll be able to get their, their business licenses there, so they can use the kitchen that she has, that they learned and trained in, to then develop a business and then to try to make it out. So, I kind of look at it as like a, a business incubator type. And, you know, it's on public land, so that's why the conversation has to be held, because that's the hang-up with these young graduates who want to cook in that kitchen to start a business. They, they can't legally, because it's on public land. So, that is why we're having this conversation. So, that's why I figured I'd start it off, because y'all are probably like, what are we, why are we having these conversations? Yeah, what are we talking about, right? But I think as, you know, our economy grows, we want to be supportive of small businesses, especially those folks that are reinventing themselves and putting an effort into going to a vocational school and learning a new trade. And, you know, personally, I would support an option. I just want to know what the least resistant path forward is, and I think that's for staff to try to figure out. The tricky challenge is, it's not technically our property, it's county property, but the grant funding that she got from N-Beds is kind of based and centered around this, so, you know, it's kind of, there's a lot of government involved and no real solution. So, just from a city perspective, we just have to look at our public land use and what could be used on it. And just so you guys are, you know, thinking down the road, is I think there could be other opportunities for public land to be used for, you know, tourism and things like that, so, just definitely. I was thinking of mini golf courses in the park, but that's just my opinion.
I love mini golf courses.
I know, right?
But, no.
Member Nelson?
No. This park is county. I can't see us turning it into a restaurant. I, I just.
It's a commissary kitchen where they cook out of there, and then they go sell their product elsewhere, but they need the kitchen space that they don't have on their own.
So, where are they going to sell their products?
They, they deliver it a lot of online. They just need a place to cook, and if you're cooking in a place, you got to have a business license.
Can I ask Brad for some input here?
Hey, Brad.
We received a request to have a commercial use at the Gibson Center, per currently zone P. We discussed options. Basically, what's happening is that vocational activity is being on the property for culinary school. And the question, the request to us was to allow for business licenses, business tax receipts, to be issued to students while they're in the program, at that location, because, of course, they're on, just starting out, and to be able to get some income in order to maybe move to another location and build their own business somewhere else. But they need a starting point. Problem is, the zoning prohibits that, prohibits retail commercial uses in that zoning district. And that's not the only property that has that zoning district. There are many other properties, including schools, that are zoned public. So, the options that we thought might be available to allow something like this would be to amend the code potentially with some limitations of allowing for some retail component there, but with limitations of whatever that might be, we're not sure yet. That's something we wanted to ask you, if you were willing to, and let us explore. Other options we talked about, rezoning a portion of the property, we think that's going to be very difficult. Well, staff's going to have a hard time supporting this kind of request, mainly because they're, it would be tailor-made to a particular property, and it's county-owned.
Right.
It's also maintained by the county. So, in addition to this conversation we had with the person who was requesting this, we explored their current business, their current BTR they have with the city for the culinary school, and spoke with the county, and spoke with the Health Department. And we didn't get a lot of questions answered, as far as what their lease really allows, what the permissions they receive from the state really allow. Those are things we're still trying to understand. We also received from the requister a, pointing out county code to see if that might be some kind of an out. Again, that means we still have to work with the county to figure out what can and can't be done on this property. So, we have a lot of questions ourselves that we have not been able to get answers to yet, but the advisability to you is basically to allow us time to explore that and see our, if there are options that we can bring back to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Brad.
I'm sorry.
I was wondering if, I didn't hear you finishing up, so.
I was just going to say that. I don't have a problem with it, but it sounds like, right now, trying to give you a definite direction is somewhat premature, until you have some more answers.
Yes. We did include in the advisability some other things that we'd like to explore as well, some other uses that are in our code that might be, could be rolled into this request for exploring how we can make changes to the plant, to the P zoning, the public zoning district, and the permitted uses in there. So, if you do give us permission to go forward with this, we would like to explore options.
Thank you. And, yeah, I was just trying to give you the backstory as to what was going on, you know, and some challenges. Obviously, Brad, you know, understands all that stuff very, very well. Vice Mayor Cole?
My question is, does the county allow them to use their facility as a commercial facility?
So far, our understanding is no, but we're not, I can't give you a definite answer, because the, the lease that we read didn't indicate that that was permitted. The Health Department staff member we spoke with didn't indicate that that was permitted, but we just have a lot of questions still that need to be answered, so.
But I think those questions probably need to be answered before we, I think we're putting it, car before the horse here, I mean, you know, I mean, I think we need to find out if the county will allow it, and if they get permission from the county, and the county allows it, then we look at this. That would be my suggestion.
So, that, that's just for this facility? So, what you're examining is the P zoning district throughout the city?
Yeah, these changes will include, if we make changes to the planning, I'm sorry, the public zoning district, it'll apply to every property that has the same zoning, including the public schools, which have vocational schools in it as well, other properties that are county or city maine-owned, that have other social services, or are just public lands in general that may be vacant, that have this particular zoning district.
Thank you.
Yes, and there's a lot of incubator-type things out there going on, and so that's just, you know, as we look at it and explore, it might not, who knows what's going to happen with this deal, right? They need more answers. But it says, we move forward as a city, how are we going to support the small business owner and the entrepreneur trying, trying to make it, so.
Member Muskoso?
Yeah, I think, I'll just echo what everyone else said, is that we, we would need to look into the contract for the Gibson Center. I know there's a lot of, it's a tight-knit community there, and there's a lot of chatter about what people want there, and so it could be very fluid in what gets there. But also, this is one thing I really would say should go to our planning and zoning. Those guys are really the experts on some of these things, and looking at various properties that this would affect, where we might be limited in what we're seeing, this is kind of where they get into the minutia of everything. So, so I would like, I don't know if we're asking for what we're actually, what the motion is or for what we're doing, but I would say that maybe we could have it go back to our planning and zoning and have them give us some thoughts on it.
Any ordinance that's drafted would have to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission before it comes to you, but you could give us direction to allow us to explore these options, we bring them back to you with options, and then you can have, make a direction as to whether you want to go forward with an ordinance of any type.
Thank you. Member Stokel?
Yes. So, for me, I would just like to have more information on why we have the rules that we do have, because the first sentence I'm reading here is, "The public zoning does not allow public uses." It's just kind of funny to me, so when I read it, I was like, okay, we have public zoning, but many of these vocational schools, community centers, community service, convention centers, and other public uses are not permitted in public zoning. So, I would personally just like to see and have a little bit more information of why that is, and maybe some of the consequences, you know, why, why we have it like that.
The way we read it is, what you're reading is, it doesn't allow nonprofit uses. In other words, it doesn't allow other agencies or nonprofit agencies to be using that property. Basically, it's supposed to be only for a government public agency, and operated by a government publication. That's how you, we initially read it, when we look at the intent statement of that zoning district. But in reality, those properties are being used by, or leased out to some nonprofit agencies, such as vocational schools, or in courses and programs inside even the public schools, which are also zone P or public. So, we would like an opportunity to explore this and see if we can clean up some issues, because there's definitely a need for these kind of schools and trainings inside the city, and these are public lands with public facilities that are, that could accommodate those.
Thank you. Any other questions? Member Nelson?
Move to approve advisability to amend the list of uses in P zoning district.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And, didn't, didn't, oh, I didn't call cards. I'm sorry. No cards. All right, well, yeah, good. I'm glad. I knew there was no cards. All right, so, let's do this again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And with that, I would like to take a quick recess after we have a quick discussion about extending the meeting. So, if we take a recess, it puts us like, you know, I don't know, five, 10 minutes, and that puts us like 10:26, so. Member Nelson?
Okay, I'm going to move to extend the meeting to 11:30. But I have to say, at that point, if we have anything left over, I think we need to table it, because at some point, you know, I noticed this when we had the meeting until 5 o'clock in the morning, after midnight, there are none of us awake.
Nothing good happens after midnight.
Nothing good. As my dad used to say, "Nothing good happens after midnight," and that's why you should be home.
Thank you, Member Nelson, for the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going till 11:30, and we're going to take a 10-minute recess. Thank you. Thank you.
Public non-agenda items?
Hello again, Dr. Kathleen O'Rourke, Titusville resident. And first, I want to thank you all for redoing that application process because I didn't feel comfortable speaking on criminal backgrounds, but someone had to do it. So, thank you, I appreciate it. Now, the next thing I want to say, I've got, and if I get foggy, it's late, and that's part of my point. It's my understanding that the goals of the city council are to encourage citizen engagement and transparency, and by changing the agenda and the order, you essentially took away one period of citizen comment, and particularly earlier when more people were here. Please do not do that again. If you're going to have to change it, change it ahead of time so people know. Because really, is that what you wanted to do? I hope not. All right. Number three, let me see. One of the things I wanted to talk to today is the concept of having citizens speak during petitions, and that was what I originally was going to say. Because one of the things that I've noticed have happened here, by the way, thank you for your list of rules at the beginning. Andrew, you talked about problems of overregulation and the bad effects, and we can't have pickleball courts. But you guys are overregulating citizen comment to the point that you're really shutting down citizens. And that is, I understand it's a three-minute rule, but I've seen in the past that when it was handled by Mayor Diesel, he would say, "Oh, we just need a little more time, another minute." It's very respectful. The way that this is where you look powerless, to tell you the truth, because you have to wait for them to give you approval to allow someone an extra 15 seconds, 30 seconds, a minute, and it's so disrespectful, and it's a way that these rules are actually negatively impacting on the citizens' feeling of being heard and respected, and you hearing what we have to say. And I would like you to actively change that. Is this something you're willing to look into doing?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that, because this is a real problem. And again, it's late, I'm tired, I planned to talk about this many hours earlier, so please also don't do this again.
Yeah, and just to let you know, these agenda items that I asked to be moved up front were things that we didn't get to at the last meeting because we ran out of time. So that was the reason for that. And then the new business, because there was a bunch of people here that did want to speak about new business, and we wanted to get that out before it ended. Unfortunately, we, it ran late. And I keep asking at every mayor's report I give, these are the rules of council. If you'd like to see changes, please, let's discuss them.
Okay, and I understand time, but guess what? You could make people's presentations a higher priority and keep those in at the beginning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray?
Good evening, gentlemen. I've read this before, under Florida 112, your Code of Ethics, quote, "You are the governing body of the city, which will exercise all the legislative and judicial powers of the city." Mr. Broom talked about statute 316. I've talked about that in nine previous meetings. I don't think you should cherry pick which laws, which ordinances you're going to enforce. If you want me to read it again, I will, but in a nutshell, like I've said before, I don't think you're doing your job in this respect. I've been to enough meetings to see that you've helped many other people. Ms. Nelson said December 24 that 6:00 AM was way too early for construction-related traffic, and council helped all concerned then and there. 5:11 AM is way too early for daily loud disturbances also, especially when it violates Titusville codes, Florida law, and the federal law under the EPA. It's high time for you to do your job. I told you I have developed more health issues because you won't do your job. This is a medical report. I have a heart condition. If you want to see it, I'll show it to you. This just started the past couple months. I've been taking medication for ulcers. I can show you this, too. I'm getting tired of it. By the way, again, this being my 10th meeting about the excessively loud F-150 in Gardendale, belonging to Pritchard, I'll spell the name, P-R-I-T-C-H-A-R-D. Under your 13-102, noise between 10:00 to 7:00 AM is mandated under 50 decibels. For almost a year, this truck has daily awakened me and also disturbed another neighbor. Based on someone's help within Florida, I again mention that I have every reason to believe that you will not act, not do your job, not enforce your own codes and laws because Pritchard is being coddled. Everyone has heard of the Pritchard house right across the street, and my source has given me written documentation of another Pritchard who served as a councilman in 1964. I gave you this paper with their name on it several meetings ago.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Is this why you won't do your job?
I don't even know who those people are. Who would like to go next? Mr. Johnson?
Stan Johnson, this, today I'm wearing a special shirt. This is my dad on this shirt, and he's, he's in his radio room, and he's an electrical engineer and has his hobby. He does short wave. So he's contacting other people in other counties, in other states, in other nations. And he's contacted, I think, about 250 nations or something like that, which I didn't even know they had that many. And he does this for communication, for helping other peoples, like for missionaries and so forth that are in other countries. He's done this for, and he is someone I look very highly up to. Like my dad, I'm a Navy veteran. Like my dad, I'm an engineer. Like my dad, I got married and had four children. Like my dad, there's many things. Well, he was better in tennis than I was. He beat me at tennis. I beat him at ping pong. But the thing is, is I admire him highly, and I'm letting you know this, because there's very much that he would be proud of me because I'm telling you the truth, and the truth is not being heard, and the truth is ignored. There's times that he would, he did not get on the political scene, but he was something, someone who I greatly admire, and I still do today, and he's been dead for years. But I'm closer to him now in many ways than I was years ago when he was alive. So I'm sharing with you this because I am being, what do you call it, defamed, discredited, and so forth like this for things where telling you the truth. And the thing is, it's going to backfire sometime, just like this spraying people with sewage. It's going to backfire on you guys because there's no truth, I mean, there's no excuse for this outrageous and unacceptable behavior by the city of Titusville. So I'm letting you know is where I stand and where my family stands, and it's been standing. And he was also a head deacon at our church in West Virginia. So I've tried to follow his path, and he was, I never known him to tell a lie, I've never known him to cheat on his income taxes. And I worked with him, and we did a lot of things together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anybody else for petitions and requests? Seen none, City Manager?
We're on to consent agenda items A through E.
Oh, I'm sorry, City Manager. I did not see you raise your hand, I'm sorry.
Just for public comment?
Yep. No, we're at public comment. All right, we'll show you, then you go.
Good evening. My name is Tara Hill. I'm a citizen of Titusville. I'm here to emphatically urge the council to join our neighboring cities of Memes, Palm Bay, and Melbourne, along with dozens of other Florida municipalities, in placing the removal of water fluoridation from Titusville's water supply as an agenda item at the next meeting. Hydrofluosilic acid, the chemical which is added to our drinking water, isn't simply elemental fluoride, as its proponents would suggest, nor is it the sodium fluoride used in dental hygiene products, which, by the way, should only be used topically. Hydrofluosilic acid is a highly corrosive waste byproduct of the phosphate fertilizer manufacturing industry that meets the criteria for classification as hazardous waste for toxicity, reactivity, and corrosivity by the EPA. Lancet Neurology placed it alongside lead, mercury, and arsenic as a dangerous neurotoxin that should not be ingested. The National Research Council found that fluoride ingestion, ingestion, pardon me, inhibited brain function, reduced cognitive abilities, disrupted thyroid function, and impacts the health of bones, kidneys, and the liver. After a decade-long comprehensive review of fluoride's effects on neurodevelopment and cognition, the National Toxicology Program of the National Institutes of Health concluded that fluoride exposure in drinking water is associated with lower IQ and developmental defects in children. In September of 2024, a federal court ruled that the current recommended level of .7 milligrams per liter, the same amount that is added to Titusville's water supply, poses a, quote, "unreasonable risk to health, especially to the developing brains of infants." The council should not be comfortable posing an unreasonable risk to the health of our citizens. After all, the fundamental cornerstone of informed consent is this: Where there is risk, there must be choice. The citizens and visitors of Titusville deserve the right to not ingest a medical treatment and classified neurotoxin in our drinking water, especially since it has been ruled an unreasonable risk to health. I urge the city council to heed the direction of our Surgeon General Joseph Ladapo and our incoming Secretary of Health and Human Services, and follow the example of so many of our neighboring communities in being on the right side of history by prioritizing the health and preserving the informed consent of Titusville's citizens by voting to remove hydrofluosilic acid from our water supply as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Richard Webb. I'm your customer at 1630 South Street. I am here to give you the opportunity to demonstrate your commitment to public health in this community and quit adding that hydrofluosilic acid to the water supply. You heard some about the background. In October, we saw the end of a seven-year court case where a Judge Chin in California said that the EPA has to go back and change their rules because it doesn't comport with current science. And so our Surgeon General Ladapo then came out and specifically said that it was unconscionable medical malpractice to add hydrofluosilic acid to the water supply. We got doctors, mostly dentists, talking about fluoride, and fluoride is not what we're adding to the water. I checked with Kevin Cook, and he said, "No, we're adding hydrofluosilic acid." Boy, that's hard to say, isn't it? And it's a question of teeth over brains. I can't imagine how the dentists think that preserving teeth is somehow better than preserving brains, but there are worldwide studies, well, yeah, it kind of indicates that maybe they've had a little too much fluoride. But there have been worldwide studies that showed that there's a decrease in IQ. And I sent to all of you the information. I would implore you to please click on some of those links and read the real science. Don't just take our opinions about this and our studied view. But there's one other thing. Chlorine dioxide is a better way to clean your water than chlorine. Did you know that chlorine produces toxic byproducts that are carcinogenic? That means it causes cancer. And some of the cities, particularly Palm Bay, they're adding ammonia to take the chlorine and convert it into chloramines, which rots the pipes and rots the washers in your faucets and everything, and you're drinking that stuff. You don't want to be drinking that. I don't. You're also showering in it, even if you have a really good water filter. So I would ask you to please put that on the agenda and get rid of that hydrofluosilic acid. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for public comment? Counsel? All right, I did ask, oh, you're coming up, and I did ask at our last meeting, under my mayor's report, to take up fluoride as an agenda topic, or actually to schedule a special meeting where we just talked about that, because I know everybody's going to come out, and I figured we give everybody plenty of time to advertise it, and everybody just be able to come together and have that conversation. Counsel decided not to take it up at that time, but I just wanted to give you the backstory of what we've had conversations so far. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Christina Nunes, and I just want to back up my friends, and I can't give the whole explanation. I don't have the brain power to do that, but I have read, and I am a cancer survivor, and for the past 27 years, I've been avoiding and learning, why did I get it? How do I avoid it? And yes, I think that it merits for it to be studied and for it to be removed from our drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you. Going once, going twice. City Manager?
On to consent items A through E. City Council, are there any questions, the staff, for consent agenda items?
Yes, I would like to pull, if you could me?
Member, member of the House?
I'm sorry.
All good.
Yes? Okay. I would like to pull, sorry, 8E.
Council members, are there any other agenda items that you'd like to pull? City Clerk, are there any cards for consent?
Two cards.
And with your permission, Mayor, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
I'm sorry, what did you say, City Manager?
Yes, sir. With your permission, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Yes, thank you.
Consent agenda item 8A, accept the FY 2025 Victims of Crime Grant Award. Consent agenda item 8B, Fire Station 14 Generator Purchase and Installation. Consent agenda item 8C, accept the FY 2025 Local Justice Assistance Grant. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the fire department's budget transfer request.
Thank you, City Manager. Read them all, right?
Correct, and Councilmember Moscosco pulled 8E. We'll handle that one separately.
Yep. City Clerk, cards?
Stan Johnston for item B and item D.
Absent. Welcome back in. Hey, Stan.
Where?
Yep. You're up.
Okay, I have it on these two items.
Yep.
They both have to do with the fire department, and so I'm asking you to table these. I don't see anybody from the fire department represented here, but there's a reason why I'm asking you to table, because the fire department, what they're doing is they're violating laws, and so I call them about the violation of laws, and what do they do? They don't return my calls. They don't answer my calls. I send them emails. They don't do anything. They don't say anything. So what is happening right now is there are some very serious crimes. By the way, they, this fire department is here to serve and protect the public. I'm a professional engineer. I'm here to serve and protect the public also, the health, safety, and welfare of the public. That's by state statutes. The city of Titusville Fire Department is breaking all kinds of laws, and they won't do a thing about it. They won't talk about it. It's closed doors. It's stonewalling. That's what your fire department is doing to me and my profession, defaming me and discrediting me. They just ignore the law. They ignore, and here's what, here's what our city attorney tells me. He says, you know, I can go, I can go and go to the city attorney and say, "Listen, can you do anything about this?" No, we don't prosecute our own violation of laws or somebody claiming we have a law. We don't do that, and that's understandable. Why in the world would the city, you know, persecute themselves or prosecute themselves? So I go to the Titusville Police Department, I say, "Would you, would you report this?" No, they won't report it. So I go to the state attorney's office, and he says, "I can't do anything unless the police give it to you." So I go back to the chief of police, and I say, "Listen, they can't get anything done. Would you please work with the state attorney and report and investigate this?" No, he won't do it. So what it is, it's a racket. There's no way, there's no way I can get you guys to break the law, I mean, to not break the law. Does anybody understand what I'm saying? So I'm saying, I'm asking you, I'm asking you to table this issue and have them answer questions, because they, the violation of laws that they're doing are not bad, they're outrageous, unacceptable. So I want you to give it some thought and get the fire department to do something that is reasonable and acceptable. But I can give you a number of laws that they violate. In fact, I've sent them to you. You don't, guys, don't respond either. So anyhow, we got a problem, and you guys are in, well, the fire department's breaking laws, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk?
The next card is for item E. Do you want to do that now or wait?
Counsel, do you want to split the comments up? I'm asking for guidance on what you guys want to do. Do you guys prefer just the consent items that were all together, be talked about now, or do you want to split up the comments for public comment?
I think I'd do it all together.
Okay. City Clerk?
Michael Mijak for item 8E.
Michael Mijak, Alpine Lane. One of the things that we have a problem with is infrastructure. It's old, and it's aging. And we've mentioned it before, we've had leaks and spills, some are reported, some are not. The thing is that we've now learned that excess fresh water is poisonous to an estuary, to our lagoon. So even if we have a sewage release or a release from reclaimed water, we are, we're essentially putting water back into the lagoon that's fresh water that doesn't need to be there. But we're not tallying that, and I think that's important. I think we need to start getting a handle on what our infrastructure is and isn't doing. For example, the break that happened at Osprey Point over the weekend was an old line. It's an old cast iron line that's been in the ground probably since the 80s, when the plant was built. The thing is that that ductile iron doesn't do well in saltwater and sand, and it's rotting. All of them are rotting. These are 16-inch, 18-inch, 24-inch forest mains. These are big pipes. And the example of this weekend was a blowout for a planned replacement two years from now. So we are not keeping up with our infrastructure if it's breaking before we get a chance to schedule a replacement. We need to be looking at these things quicker, faster. Now, one of the things that I think was absolutely fabulous was that we had a contractor on site who was able to cap this thing pretty quickly when they realized that it wasn't something that maintenance could handle. Now, my problem is that we're not looking at this, we're not measuring these things. We had a water break near Fair Glenn. Water pressure never dropped to 20 PSI, so it was considered fine, but it was a water spill. How much, how many gallons were lost? When they're lost to the surface or when they're lost to the Indian River? I'd like to know how many releases were done at Osprey? How many times did we release fresh water into the lagoon, and how much? And how often does this happen? And I think we should start developing metrics and follow what's going on so that we can measure what's happening and improve our performance, because the ultimate loss is our Indian River lagoon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk?
No more cards.
All right, council discussion? We'll start off with consent, and then we'll move on to your polled item. Any discussion for dissent? Consent, dissent, consent?
You've got items A through D.
May I just have a comment based off of what Mr. Mijak said? Kevin, can I ask, because I know that we, for petitions and for comments, we can direct this to you, how much water was actually released from Osprey during this, this leak into the Indian River lagoon?
I'm not aware of any releases of any river lagoon from the reclaimed system.
You don't know, or there was none?
I can check with the chiefs. I've not been reported of any leak that went to the river. As far as I know, James had everything contained on site. That's what I've been told, so.
But you're not, for sure?
Well, I can't guarantee, I don't have every report from him in front of me right now, so I can, I can verify that for you, but that's what I've been told by staff.
Okay, I like that verified. Thank you.
Other council members? All right, so A through E.
A through D.
Sorry, A through D.
Yes, sir.
And like you said, nothing good happens after 10:30.
Yep, that's true.
Member Nelson?
Move to approve consent agenda, agenda items A through E.
D.
Wait a minute, she pulled E.
Yeah, we haven't done E yet.
Okay, A through D.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, item?
8E is the increase of the annual authorized amount for utility contractors. Staff is requesting an increase of $750,000 to the annual authorized amount to the construction of various utility maintenance and improvement projects under a current contract CN 24P020LR on an as-needed basis for annual, not to exceed 1.25 million dollars. Additionally, approve the associated budget amendments. There are work orders completed or planned in FY 25. These include State Route 405 F dot emergency forced main relocation due to conflicts with drainage pipe, State Route 405 F dot emergency fire hydrant and valve relocation due to a conflict of drainage pipe, Blue Heron de-watering system tank cleaning, Osprey 16-inch reuse leak emergency repair and bypass, Osprey 16-inch reclaimed main replacement due to a pipe condition at the repair location and the depth of burial inside the plant processing pipe, and a 24-inch, at Osprey, a 24-inch gravity line tapping valves and clean out for excess between VNR and affluent structures. And again, staff is recommending an increase of $750,000 to the annual utility contractors.
Thank you, City Manager. Member Moscosco?
Yes. So I think a lot of us campaigned on improving infrastructure because we know that that's extremely important, like you mentioned, that protects our lagoon. And I think part of that is staying informed about what issues are actually happening in our city. So I do want to ask you, how much information do you know about this Osprey leak that started on December 31st? I did a records request after I visited, not a records request, I asked for information after I visited on January 9th and saw the leak, and I got that sent out to the council, and I was basically given the response of, it's just, it's being taken care of. Today I went out again, and, and there is a lot going on, and that is why they're requesting, requesting 750,000, and it's definitely, it's, it's needed. My, my, my beef is not with the leak. We're going to have those things. What, what I'm really kind of upset about is that information is not being given, given to us. I'm having citizens give me that information. I'm having to show up at the plant. So today, instead of doing my meeting with our city manager and city attorney, I called them and said, can you meet me at the plant? And I appreciate that Mr. Kevin Cook came, Mr. Broome came, Mr. Larisse declined to come, but I wanted them to have eyes on what was happening. And I actually want to show you some pictures. So the first few pictures are the first days that it happened. This was January 9th, and you can see that it's actually not contained. It's not contained. And then if you want to look through, you can see from today. I mean, there's water everywhere. Yes, that's an issue, and that's a concern, but my, my biggest concern is we don't know what's going on. We're constantly getting emails about there's a garbage truck that got in an accident. Okay, that's important, but when we have an active leak since December 31st and we're not getting any information, how are we able to make, and this is what I told Kevin at the plant today, how can we make informed decisions on infrastructure improvements if we're not being given the information? And so, to be honest, I was quite disappointed that Mr. Larisse would not meet me out there because I wanted him to have eyes on the situation so he, I could understand. I will say, there are some major issues at that plant. There need, I don't know when's the last time anyone's ever toured out there. If you haven't, I really ask that you go out there. Yeah, I mean, the pictures really don't do it, it justice, but I think, you know, one of the things people talk about is transparency. Talk of Titusville, just put this out, but our council members don't even know. And so how are we supposed to build, you know, confidence in our, our local government if these things aren't being told to us? I think, I think it's extremely important. I think our, the, the public will understand we have an aging infrastructure. They understand that. They understand that there are leaks. We want to get better, but what they don't understand is when these things aren't being brought forward and saying, hey, here's the issue, this is how we're fixing it. Actually, I took Mr. Mijak out with me because I don't understand the technicalities of it all. And we kind of walked away feeling actually better than, because we were able to see that they were, they were doing a really good job. They were taking all of the good steps to, to mitigate the problem. The issue was, nobody was told about it. So that's what I would like to see moving forward, there being better communication. And Mr. Larisse, I think that comes directly from you. And so, you know, with this item, we're pulling $750,000 from Morning Dove, and I would like, because my concern was, well, if we're pulling from Morning Dove, what happens when Morning Dove needs to be fixed? And Kevin was able to explain that to me, so I'll ask him to explain that a little bit more. But my other concern is what infrastructure improvements are being deferred across the city? And I, I'm going to give you an example. I spoke with Mr. Larisse, and I said, you know, when we first moved here on Park Avenue and Harrison Street at the YMCA, one of the light poles fell in the middle of the day. The bottom was rusted out. I don't know if you guys remember. Luckily, it did not kill anyone. And so when I asked him about that, I said, so aren't there some codes or isn't there an inspection that happens every year that shouldn't get to that point? And he says, well, there is inspections, but if the council defers the infrastructure improvements, then it just happens. So we're putting our, our citizens at risk, and I think that we're not getting the full information. Like, those things are serious. I think our, our water systems are very serious. We need to be able to know what to prioritize. And so this was actually quite concerning. Not so much, I wasn't surprised that there was a leak. I, I want to say Kevin and his team, they're doing a great job out there. They really are. It was the lack of information given to our council. And then my, my last question, so Kevin, if you could just talk about, what does this money mean from pulling from Morning Dove? I would like to look at what infrastructure improvements have been deferred across the city. That might be a whole nother thing. But also with the new, like, the Trump administration, what came down today, I saw that there might be a pause on the two and a half million dollar federal grant for Osprey. So what does that mean?
That was canceled?
Was it?
Yeah, federal judge.
That's wonderful. Five o'clock, I missed it. Okay, well, good. I'm glad I was quite worried about that. So if you could just answer those two questions, I would appreciate it.
So, question regarding Morning Dove. We funded Morning Dove's enhanced water project last year into the budget, so that enhanced the budget for Morning Dove. That project's delayed behind a filter project that's got two years left to be completed, so that allowed this money to be moved to fund this necessary project in the near term. Morning Dove will be refunded in the next budget years as they come forward. So we'll have a proposal on our rate studies that will show that Morning Dove will get enhanced water done in the next cycle because it can't be done in this window. So instead of moving that money back to the bottom line, we moved it amongst projects that already have allocated. If you could just repeat the second question.
And this, this will probably be where you might have to come back with some information, but what infrastructure improvements possibly have been deferred. This might be a long list across the city, and if we could know why, like, what are the major things that need to be done so that we don't have, you know, a light pole falling on someone? Like, that's, that's very serious. So I'd like to see a, I know we have a list, and I don't know when the last time it was reviewed, but I would personally like to see that.
And each year during the budget process, we do provide an unfunded list to the council of the items that weren't funded during the budget request, and the council has the option of adding them back in. Usually those are housed in the general fund side of the, of the money splitting the water sewer fund usually comes forth in another separate list, but because we're rate-driven, we'll give you an example. Next year, we are, in last year's budget, we did propose in 2026 to have nearly a $30 million capital program added. So you will see that we'll have water sewer, we'll continue to have an ask. Because we're funded by rates, we don't typically have them as deferred. We bring them forward as rate requests.
Thank you, Member Moscosco. Members Stokel?
To that point, two things. One, when we go through the budget process, as Kevin and City Manager note, like, we do have an unfunded list. I think Member Moscosco brings up a good point. Sometimes I think when we're going through that budget process, it's a little difficult to determine, okay, this is on the unfunded list, but we have these other funded projects. How do we prioritize if we don't know what's actually happening? So this, this was my heart behind, and if you followed me for years, I, I've really pushed to have more communication. It started with getting a social media person. We did that, and that did not pan out the way that I initially wanted it to because that person, my opinion was limited. We were not pushing out information. So our next step has now been to hire on a PIO, and my fear is that maybe that, that person's not getting the flexibility to put out this information. I, I don't know what we need to do, but I want this information out because, again, to Member Moscosco's point, I, we're not doing anything wrong. Like, these are good projects. We are trying to get as much money as possible, but when we are not being transparent, it looks like we are doing something wrong. And so I've, I've always been a huge proponent of, please, let's share what's happening because I think that's the only way for us to kind of build that trust back. And quite frankly, we just haven't done it. It, it's been very frustrating for several years, and I, I don't know the answer, but I'm hoping now with this new PIO that we can get information and that information can be pushed out proactively to kind of help alleviate. And yeah, it's kind of frustrating when you see talk of Titusville and other people either posting information first or posting misinformation because we haven't put out correct information, so they're just maybe making stuff up or coming up with assumptions. So I would like to see something done on that front. But yeah, I have no concerns, obviously, with this. We need to fix our infrastructure.
Thank you, Members Stokel. Member Nelson?
I just want to point out that when we do put the information out, if we have to raise taxes, people, people understand it. I mean, we can say, hey, look, this is what we did. This is why we did it. This is why your taxes are what they are. You know, nobody wants to raise taxes. But on the other hand, we have to have good infrastructure. So I think the more information, the better.
Thank you. Member Moscosco, I know your, your topic was very important, but I'm just trying to figure out how we can address these things. We're on 8E, right? Eight, 8E, right? So we're going to vote now on that, and then I'd be willing to entertain taking up a discussion if we want to have that out and decide what we want to do going forward with either public information or, or infrastructure funding, whatever it is. But let me get to the motion at hand, and then we'll, we'll, we'll have that conversation. So can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve consent, agenda item A, 8E.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. I'll just open it up for a quick discussion among council in terms of information sharing. I'm open to ideas and suggestions. Of course, I have mine, but I'll let you guys kind of go first. So, Member Nelson?
I'm going to suggest we put this off, this discussion off until the next meeting. You have 20 minutes.
So would you make a motion to add that to the, the agenda?
Yes, thank you. So I make a motion to add.
Public information.
Public information to the.
I, I think what would be better, we can, since we do have a PIO, push information out, but what information would you like?
I think more info.
All.
Yeah. I don't know, and I'm just going to add this. I know it's late. I'm new on council, so I'm not sure how this, but I feel like I get very, when I ask questions, I don't get enough information. I'm also told now that when I can't just call an employee just to ask for information, everything has to be done in writing, and I don't know if that's a policy for you, but that's a policy for me. So if I want to call Chief Lau, I need to, and ask him something, I need to put that in writing. And if that's the policy, is that the policy for everyone? Because that's what I'm, I'm being told.
Sure. City Council, direct contact with staff members creates conflict. So we tend to make it a, a request for information and share that information with city council. So you, you're, you're getting five council members and a director, and you're reaching out to an employee that's doing his work. The, the employees don't know who to answer if they're getting overwhelmed with too many leaders guiding them. So we try to funnel things and provide council the information that one council member asks for, requests for information, and then we send it to all of you.
Member Moscosco, before you jump in, it's actually in the charter that we have to go through Scott and Scott as to.
No, I, I absolutely, and I, and I know it's a system, and I'm, I'm learning the system, but, you know, I find it really difficult to get the information that I need. When I did do a few requests, I got told by Mr. Larisse, you're putting in too many requests. If we have our, our staff looking at these things, then we're not going to be able to get through the development reviews. So then it's like, okay, well, I want to ask questions. I'm a new council member. I want to get this information, but then I'm being told, you're asking too many questions. So.
Well, it's, it's balancing act. It's the same staff answering your questions. So a council member's request for information rises to the top, and we answer them, and our other work gets put aside. So that's kind of the way we're, we're dealing with the amount of information that's being asked.
I get that, but to say, you know, you're going to be delaying the process of this if you keep asking questions. I'm not asking for really in-depth questions. They're very general, basic questions. So I'm, I'm honestly, I don't know, I'm new on the council. I'm finding it difficult to do my job. It was actually easier as a citizen to get information because I could go and do a public records request and get that information immediately, and I could do it in different ways. As a council member, I feel like my hands are more tied.
Thank you, Member Moscosco. Members Stokel?
I would just say, if we can talk about this at the next meeting, and this kind of goes to what I was saying earlier, if we come back with our goals and like what we want to focus on, I think that's important discussion to have because I do feel like we all need to be able to have what we need to do our jobs effectively. I just know we have to get through a couple items, but I would like to have that conversation. I think, I don't know if we made a motion to talk about this at the next meeting. Did that happen?
I believe Member Moscosco.
You can just do it under your reports if you wish.
Nope, we'll, we'll make a motion and put it as an agenda item.
Okay.
Second. Well, I can't make the motion, but Member Moscosco did. I'm taking Joel in as a second, as I remember Nelson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, City Manager, to add that to the next.
Okay, we're on item 9B, which is Small Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, SSA number 12 dash 2024 Sedgwick Avenue duplex. City Attorney will read this, two ordinances, 62025 and 72025 for the record.
I will do that. First, I'd like to advise the public, this is small scale, 1224. This will include both the land use ordinance number 62025 and the rezoning ordinance number 72025. Therefore, anyone who desires to speak should address both the land use and zoning ordinances during your speaking time. At the close of the public hearing, council will consider each ordinance separately. At this time, I'd also like to read the quasi judicial rules. During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign oath contained thereon, swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chamber and should be provided to the clerk. Those speaking in favor of requests will be heard first. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, have you received signed oath cards from persons wishing to speak before the city council swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth? To staff and applicant, please ensure that all witnesses that intend to speak have signed an oath card and presented it to the clerk. If there's anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi judicial item, please submit a card to the clerk at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi judicial item, said visitor opinions shall be disclosed.
All right. Sorry, I cleared my throat. Thank you very much.
At this time, if there's no disclosure, I'll read the titles.
Sounds good.
Ordinance number 62025, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 601988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by amending the future land use designation on 0.9 plus minus acres of land located on Sedgwick Avenue between North Dixie Avenue and Kell Avenue. minus acres of land located on Sedgwick Avenue between North Dixie Avenue and Kell Avenue, generally located east of Arthur Dunne Air Park, and identified by Brevard County parcel ID numbers 21, 35, 33, 00271, 21, 35, 33, 00272, and 21, 35, 33, 00319, from low-density residential to medium-density residential, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number seven, 2025, an ordinance amending ordinance number five, 1993, the City of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the zoning classification on .9 plus minus acres of land located on Sedgwick Avenue between North Dixie Avenue and Kell Avenue, generally located east of Arthur Dunne Air Park, and identified by Brevard County parcel ID numbers 21, 35, 33, 00271, 21, 35, 33, 00272, and 21, 35, 33, 00319, from the single-family medium-density R1B zoning district to the multifamily medium-density residential R2 zoning district, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on January 8, 2025, the Commission, acting as your local planning agency, made a motion to approve ordinance number six, 2025, the land use change as presented, and approve ordinance seven, 2025, the rezone change from single-family medium-density residential to multifamily medium-density residential. The vote was six to zero. The applicants requesting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment with the rezone to allow the construction of a multifamily or duplex on the property located on Sedgwick Avenue between North Dixie and Kell Avenue, generally located east of Arthur Dunne Air Park, the current low-density residential future land use designation and single-family medium-density zoning districts do not permit multifamily residential uses. The applicant did not submit a concept plan with the request. Therefore, the analysis in this report considers the maximum allowable build-out scenario under the requested medium-density residential future land use designation and the multifamily medium-density residential zoning districts. The medium-density residential future land use designation allows a maximum density of 10 dwelling units per acre. The requested multi multifamily medium-density residential zoning district is more restrictive than the requested future land use designation and allows a maximum of nine dwelling units per acre. The subject property is .9 acres plus or minus in size, which yields a maximum of eight residential units in the R2 zoning district, and could take the form of duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, or any other multifamily structures, provided the development standards can be met. Mr. Parrish is here to bring you up to speed on this, and this is your public hearing.
Thank you, City Manager.
So I'm just going to go through and hit just a few pages to give you some highlights and explain our analysis. On page 242 of your packet, it's the second page of the city staff report. I'm going to point you to that second paragraph. Let's read here. Previously, the property was rezoned from rural residential RR to single-family medium-density R1B in 2005. The intent of the 2005 request was to allow the construction of three single-family residences. Staff report for that application identified the apartment complex abutting the subject property to the north, which is zoned R3, which has a maximum density of 15 dwelling units per acre. Report also identified the manufactured housing park to the south across Sedgwick Avenue, which was zoned RMH, which is residential mobile home, which allows for a maximum dwelling units of eight units per acre. These properties were referenced as examples of how the requested increase in residential density would be consistent with the surrounding zoning. Today's request is to continue to go up from that five units per acre all the way up to eight units per acre, basically. So in the matrix that you see there, what's identified, it's listed as property information, and in the first table, it says existing use, future use, and zoning on that same page, 242 of your packet. You'll see the current future land use right now, low-density residential, allows a maximum number of units of five units per acre. The zoning allows it up to 5.8. The land use trumps that, so it's max at five. On the next table there, just below that, called proposed use, future land use and zoning, that same table with this request, if the low-density residential is replaced with the now medium-density residential, it'll allow up to 10 units per acre. However, the zoning underneath that that we're requesting is multifamily medium-density residential, which allows nine units per acre, but because of the acreage size of this property, they will actually be limited to eight. So at the end of this request, they will have added three residential units to this property. On page 243 of your packet, which is the next page of the staff report, page three, Comprehensive Plan Land Use Policy 1.14.5 states that medium-density residential uses, which has a maximum of 10 units per acre, be located adjacent to at least a collector street. Subject property has frontage on Sedgwick Avenue, a local roadway. The proposed future land use designation could be considered an extension of the existing medium-density residential future land use designation that's on Sedgwick Avenue already, which is adjacent to North Dixie Avenue, a collector road. Purpose statement of the requested R2 zoning district states, the multifamily density residential R2 district is intended to allow the erection of a variety of housing types at a maximum density of nine units per acre. Again, ultimately, at the end of this, if this is approved, they will have increased it from five units per acre to eight units per acre. This district is designated, is designed to allow development adjacent to Arturo Collector Streets and is well-served by public services and facilities. Sedgwick a dead ends and empties out onto a collector, which is Dixie. The property also meets the criteria for being designated as an infill development, consistent with policy, future land use element policy 1.7.7 of the Comprehensive Plan, which states, is within an area that contains lots of two acres or less where property, where 80% of more of the lots or tracks are developed and have been for at least 20 years. Infill development is encouraged in the Comprehensive Plan Policy 1.7.9, which states, the city shall provide standards and administrative process to facilitate infill development. The LDRs, the land development regulations, shall be amended to provide flexibility in site development. So we have policies that encourage this. On page 249 of your packet, I'm just going to skip where we summarize our analyses, which is the second and the last page of the staff report. You'll see that section there at the bottom, about halfway down on that page, page nine of the staff report, highlights of findings from staff analyses specifically related to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Considerations of the proposed small-scale amendment request. There is surrounding areas predominantly residential in nature and includes a variety of residential future land use designations that range in density from two units per acre to 15 units per acre. And I'll show that on a maps. Secondly, future land use element policy 1.14.5 states, which I've already read, about the location of where this land use is supposed to be primarily appropriate. Third, approval of the request would entitle the property with up to nine units in the future land use designation. The units could take the form of various residential uses, duplexes, triplexes, or quads. There is a need for additional housing units, especially housing type policies other than single-family residences, to increase the supply of housing units and potentially mitigate the ongoing housing affordability crisis statewide. Finally, Comprehensive Plan Policy 1.7.9 encourages infill development, and the property meets the criteria for infill development, according to policy 1.7.7. Further down under the rezoning, there's highlights. If the city council is inclined to approve the requested future land use change to medium-density residential, the staff recommends approval of the rezoning to multifamily medium-density residential R2, as consistent with the future land use designation. The surrounding area is predominantly residential in nature and includes a variety of zoning districts with varying maximum densities, again, two units per acre up to 15 units per acre. Purpose statement of the requested R2, we believe the requesting is consistent with that. Approval of the request would entitle the property with up to eight units maximum in the zoning district, based on the size of the property. Property is in the city's urban service area, and public facilities are available to serve the property, except for reclaimed water. Property is in the area of critical concern, which requires the installation of reclaimed water dry lines for future connection. That's if it's going to be subdivided. There are no substantial reasons why the property cannot be used in the existing zoning district. So what we said there is basically you can develop under the current zoning as a single-family unit. We recommend approval of the request of the land use amendment, and if that is approved, we also recommend approval of the rezoning. I'm going to point you to page 258 of your packet. The applicant's provided a narrative. The current zoning requirements for single-family housing to be located in the middle of multifamily density apartments and residential manufactured housing parks. This creates an opposing hardship for single-family housing to be surrounded by high-density housing. We're proposing, this is the applicant's statement, we are proposing to build multifamily medium-density residential R2, a duplex structure, which will be similar in kind of the existing surrounding structures, both multifamily apartments and residential manufactured housing, which justifies the rezoning request. The rezoning request will allow medium-density residential housing to exist adjacent to high-density residential housing, which provides maximum compatibility with surrounding neighbors. This minimizes potential hardships variance requests from the current single-family low-density future land use requirement. Staff concurs with this analysis, this statement. On page 273 of your packet, you'll see an aerial of the property in question, and you can see the different development housing types that are surrounding it. And that Sedgwick is a dead-end road that empties out onto Dixie. On the next page, on page 274, you'll see the land use map. This is the existing land use on the property, which is low-density residential.
Brad, can I stop you for a second, please?
Yes, sir.
It's 11:29. Can I have a motion?
Against by better judgment.
We only have a few items. We're almost there.
Okay. 12 o'clock. But I would suggest we finish this item up. And gentlemen, it's been sitting there patiently all night for item D, and we make sure that we get those done. If we can get anything else done, great. But anything else would be tabled.
I promise the next two will be quick.
Yeah, I think the next two are.
Okay.
And again, we do have first readings, which are just first readings, but I need to get those done tonight.
Mm-hmm. How fast can you talk?
Bad.
He's a lawyer.
I second the motion to midnight.
I have a second, all those.
Yeah, you already got a second.
All right. Any comments from the crowd on extending? All right, thanks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Good luck.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Continue, Brad.
So the last thing I want, well, second to last thing I want to say is, on page 275 of your packet, you'll see the proposed land use, if approved, be medium-density residential. We believe that that is an extension of an existing medium-density residential was on the south side of Sedgwick. Generally, land categories and zoning districts run across streets, basically. We believe that that's just an extension of what's already happening there. The Planning and Zoning Commission conferred with that, and they recommended approval unanimously on this. With that, we believe that the request is an extension of an existing already land use category on the prop, in the area. The density increase is de minimis and not significant. A duplex or multifamily development is compatible with the surrounding development types. With that, I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Member Stokoe.
Yep, I just have a few brief questions. Just to clarify, one, if I heard you correctly, you said because of the size of this property, they will only be able, if this were to pass, they would only be able to build three residential units?
Eight.
The density would be increased from five to eight.
But.
That's the density, that potential. But then they'll have to meet the development standards. So whatever those are, that might actually eat into the number of units. But the applicant's expressed to us, they only want to build two duplex buildings.
Okay. Is it possible if the land use was, if this were to pass, that somebody could come back and change the zoning to a higher intensity that would allow more than the max eight? Or no, or it wouldn't be able to go above the max nine because of the land use?
The land use will always trump any rezoning that would happen underneath it.
And then my last question is, do we know why there was no concept plan submitted?
The applicant can answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Member Moscoso.
Yeah, I think my concerns are also there's no concept plan submitted, so I'll be interested to hear about that. But also, it violates our comprehensive plan. I mean, I've never seen something written by staff that said the land use designation could be considered. I, you know, I went to a conference, and I think Member Stokoe was there, and they said the comp plan is king. And so even though this looks like a great project, the fact that it is letting out on a local road violates 1.14.6. And I know Brad, we go back and forth on this. But for me, that spills over to a lot of different developments. I mean, that's what's happening in Apollo Gardens. They're spilling out on a local road. And so for me, I think it's a slippery slope. And I've seen the staff try to interpret it in different ways. Our code does have a definition of what adjacent means, and this doesn't meet that definition, so it is not adjacent to a collector or an arterial road.
I disagree. I understand the conference you went to. I was part of that organization. Yes, the Comprehensive Plan is not supposed to violate that. But if you look at the, how the city staff or the city council in the past has applied these policies, this, what we're proposing here is consistent with that in the past few decades. So you'll find several examples like that, where you have a piece of property is extending along, we have an existing land use category being extended across the street like that. It's already emptying out to a collector road. You look at that policy in a, with all of the other policies of the Comprehensive Plan. You're supposed to look at the entire document together to determine and make a decision as to whether what's compatible or what is consistent.
Well, I can't make decisions based off of what council has done in the past. I have to look at what I've been given, and I was given a comprehensive plan. And I do my best to to understand that. And I understand there's all different components, but I don't feel like this is a black and white issue. I feel like how am I supposed to, we've denied, things have been denied for developers because of this exact issue. So how are we picking and choosing which developers, which developments we're going to go through? It makes it hard for me as a council member, and I think it makes it hard for developers to know what's going to happen.
Ultimately, the city council is the arbiter of how to interpret the Comprehensive Plan. So the staff does its best to provide analysis to you based on everything that's stated in the Comprehensive Plan. If you look at the Comprehensive Plan, it's not as black and white as you might see. It's a lot of policy language that is not hardened stone like you might find in a regulation. The definition you're talking about adjacent to is specific to the code. So the Comprehensive Plan is, the city staff, or the city, excuse me, the city council is supposed to be the arbiter of what is consistent. So I think if you see that the policies are, what they're proposing is not consistent with certain policies in the Comprehensive Plan, then that's got to be your interpretation. But collectively, that decision is made by the city council.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Member Moscoso. Member Stokoe.
Yep. So I, I understand where Member Moscoso is coming from. Looking at the map, I'm on page 274. Brad, would it be fair to say, because I, we get into this position a lot, and then I don't feel it says black and white. So for me, when I'm kind of analyzing these projects, and I don't know if staff is doing this, or if this even makes sense. So we already have development. The comp plan changes periodically when we do amendments based on our vision for the city. And so I think that as the comp plan stands now, we, our intent is, we don't want developments multifamily like this happening on local roads. That being said, when there are already developments in place that are there, and we're doing one piece of a property in the middle of a whole development, and in the surrounding area, like right across the street, is medium density, I kind of take that into consideration as like, the intent of the comp plan is, any new developments that we're having, we're not ideally putting on a local road. That being said, we already have an existing development with one, is that right? Am I thinking clearly, or is that how staff interprets the comp plan with applications?
I still don't understand your question. I'm sorry.
Okay. So we have a comp plan that says one thing, that says, do not go out on a local road. Right?
Read the policy again. I would encourage you to look at that one more time on page.
Hang on. Is it, I can pull it on here, too. Because it's been brought up several times, and that, to me, is the intent. And to Member Moscoso's point, I think Apollo Gardens is a prime example of that. And unfortunately, that didn't come before council. But right now, they don't have that on that street. That's, that's low-density residential on that street. And now Apollo Gardens is proposing that. This already has some medium-density residential. Is that what staff?
You're talking about Sedgwick?
Correct, yes. So is that kind of what staff does when they're analyzing it?
Yes, we look, so. Yes, we look, so look at all of the policies together, you look at the entire comprehensive plan, to make a determination as the intent, and what it's really meeting, and what it's really applying, asking for, and discouraging, and what is discour, encouraging. And so based on what we saw here was this compatibility, there is a de minimis increase in density, there's development type, and there's already an existing land use there.
Okay, that's the component I was getting at, yeah. I think because I see medium-density right there, right across the street, like, and it's like right in the middle, it's not taking up the whole street, it's not surrounding, you know, low-density around it, I could see kind of how that could happen in this case. But to your point, it's not always black and white, because I would argue there's other cases where I, it doesn't make sense.
The Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting heavily focused on compatibility more than anything else. They thought that that was more important than the other policy. They put more weight on that than they put on the other policies. And I think that's why they made the decision they made.
Okay, thank you.
Member Moscoso.
I can't out-argue Brad, I've tried on this policy many times, but I would just say the issue with the local road is, like we discussed, they were not meant to have that traffic or that weight on it. So if you go out and you measure these local roads, they're not meant to have this additional traffic coming in and out. So it's not that we just don't want the, you know, these developments, it's just they just weren't built for that. And so that is why, and if you talk to Dwight Severs, he is the one who added that section that says except on Rock Pit, and he'll give you like the history on everything of why that was important, and what was happening in the city at that time is that multi-family developments were just being put wherever, and they realized that there needed to be something in the code that protected these local roads. So it's there for a reason, we can go back and forth on what trumps what. I just want to put that in, I strongly feel like this is very important.
Thank you, Member Moscoso. City Clerk, can you call the cards, please?
Yes, sir. The first card is Jeremiah O'Ford.
Hello, Jeremiah O'Ford, 852 Oberry Road. I am the owner, developer. Just a few things I just wanted to touch on. First, my local contractor here, we're building out these infill lots, we're taking infill lots that are less desirable for most contractors and residents, and we're building them, putting in single-family homes, and trying to, trying to go for the crisis of affordable housing and properties for rent for low-income to medium-income families. So this project fell, fell in our lap, and we looked at it as a whole, we looked at it as it was extending the land use. It's undesirable and unfavorable to look across the street from a single-family residential house and look at a mobile home park. So I just want to bring that out, you know, and I think the comprehensive plan, we didn't put a comprehensive plan in, because we kind of gave you in a package, you'll see what we plan on doing as far as putting in the duplexes, so we didn't want to spend the adverse money to try to do it, because we're trying to make this affordable, right? This is not a commercial multifamily residence. The more money we spend, obviously, the more money we have to try to charge and recoup, so we didn't want to do that. But we did give an idea of what we were trying to build and put in here. Another point that was brought up, I want to try to hit your points, I wrote this whole thing, but I just want to, the Apollo, somebody brought up the Apollo development, and that's totally different. That was dropping in a multifamily in the middle of a residential area, that's not what we were trying to do. So it is a little different as we see it. And I guess the comprehensive plan, we talked about the comprehensive plan, and I don't think if you read it, it's really, it really supports it because it's an extension, and so I'd say let's read that and get into it as we are in the area, and we have quite a bit of other infill lots and properties that we want to build. I think this is going to probably come up once or twice, so I want to make sure, here at city council, we kind of understand it a little bit better. I know you sat on the board for P&amp;Z for a while, so I just, I just want to make sure that we understand that. That's pretty much it, I'm not going to take up my time reading this.
Thank you. Member Moscoso.
And, yeah, I wish you guys the best, I really do. It's definitely nothing personal, it's more of the reaction to if this gets passed, what it could cause in the future. So I have seen your plan, it definitely looks good, and so I definitely think I appreciate what you guys are doing, providing affordable housing. It's just when we allow one thing, what does that mean for other developers that come up?
I understand. And I'll just, still going, we're on 25 houses, and they've all sold to low-income or medium-family housing, four of them has went for rentals, so we're here in the community.
All right, thank you. Any other cards, City Clerk?
Yes, sir, one. Vicky Conklin.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number 6-2025.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. City Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I forgot to close the public hearing, didn't I? All right, public hearing's closed, by the way. All right.
Move to approve ordinance number 7-2025.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. City Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. City Manager?
Onto 9C, which is conditional use permit, CUP number 4-2024, 800th Century Medical Drive. Staff recommends approval of the CUP number 4-2024 to allow a pain management clinic use in hospital medical zoning district located at 800th Century Medical Drive with the following conditions. A six-foot-high fence be placed along the rear of the property line. At the 22 January 2025 P&amp;Z meeting, they recommended approval unanimously 7-0.
Thank you, City Manager. Any cards?
Mayor, I just want to point out a couple things for you. On page 295 of your packet, you'll see the special conditions of a pain management clinic in the city's Titusville's code requires this public hearing. They're going to go into an existing building in a medical center, basically, but they had to go through this process. We look at the special conditions, and we believe there is only really one they need to adhere to, and that is a screen. They have proposed a six-foot fence behind the building, and we believe that satisfies the conditions, so we recommend an approval.
Thank you, Brad. Any cards?
No, sir.
Member Moscoso?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, Member Nelson?
Move to approve conditional use permit number 4-2024, 800th Century Medical Drive with the condition of a six-foot-high fence to be placed along the rear property line.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
City Manager?
9D, which is the easement vacation application number 2-2024 for 3520 Oak Hill Drive. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the easement vacation unanimously 7-0. The request is to vacate a 10-foot by 47-foot of a 10-foot rear utility easement at the property located at 3520 Oak Hill Drive.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk, are there any cards?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Any motion?
Move to approve easement vacate application number 2-2024, 3520 Oak Hill Drive.
Second.
That'll also need to include approval of resolution number 1-2025.
And approve resolution number...
1-2025.
1-2025.
I have a motion. Vice Mayor Cole?
Second.
Second. City Clerk?
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
City Manager, does it...
Onto first readings, ordinance, this is small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, SSA number 7-2024, located at 800 Lane Avenue. It contains ordinance number 4-2025 and 5-2025. The city attorney will read the first reading.
Ordinance number 4-2025, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville, by amending the future land use designation on land located at 800 Lane Avenue from downtown mixed-use educational and conservation to downtown mixed-use commercial high-intensity and commercial low-intensity on 10.19 plus-minus acres of property, having parcel ID number 22350400504, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 5-2025, an ordinance amending ordinance number 5, 1993, of the city of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the zoning classification on land located at 800 Lane Avenue from the public P and open space and recreation OR zoning districts to community commercial CC zoning district on 10.19 plus-minus acres of property, having parcel ID number 22350400504, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
At the 22 January 2024, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of SSA 7-2024 to change the future land use designation from downtown mixed-use education and conservation to downtown mixed-use commercial high-intensity and commercial low-intensity. That was approved 7-0. In addition, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of SSA 7-2024 to rezone from public to open, and public space, open space recreation to community commercial with the condition that right turns onto Lane Avenue be restricted. The approval was four yes, three no. The member in opposition, the members in opposition voted that they felt that the planned development would have been a more appropriate zoning. The public hearing will be held at the regular city council meeting on February 11th, 2025, at 6:30. Mr. Parrish is here to answer for any questions that you may have on the first reading.
Any cards?
Yes, sir, we have one. It's Bob Watwood.
Ladies and gentlemen, first let me say I'm very sorry to prolong your meeting. I want to go home, too. But my name is Bob Watwood. My address is 560 Bahama Drive in Atlantic Florida, but I was born and raised in Titusville, and I now own a single-family residence on Lane Avenue, which was formerly owned by a relative for many, many years. Although I signed a card as being in opposition, I'm not opposed to commercial development as I believe it'd be preferable to the multifamily development that last prospective purchaser of the property proposed. And I'm not opposed to commercial low-density rezoning or a future land use designation that contemplates low-density commercial. However, I have no, I do have a question, and I do question the compatibility and permissibility of high-intensity commercial for this site, given the requirements of the city's future land use element and land development regulations. And interestingly, I'm about to step right into the middle of a discussion that was just being had regarding the interpretation of your code and land development regulate, your land development regulations and your plan. This property is at the intersection of State Road 405 or South Street, an arterial road, and Lane Avenue a local street, not an arterial or collector street. Your future land use element goal one, objective 1.9, policies 1.9.1 and 1.9.9 say, sites for high-intensity commercial development shall be located with convenient and direct access at arterial intersections. Collector/arterial intersections are acceptable, provided minimal access is necessary on the collector street. And locations for high-intensity commercial land use shall be deemed appropriate, provided the following factors are additionally complied with. A, sites for high-intensity commercial development shall be located near the intersections of arterials and/or collector roadways. Then your section 28.7, general provisions of your land development regulations state, all properties owned community commercial that is located in a downtown mixed-use land use as shown on the adopted future land use map shall comply with the following additional requirements. A, community commercial zoning shall be permitted where the property has frontage on and access only from a collector or higher roadway. So I guess the subject site, in my opinion, is at an intersection of an arterial roadway and a local street, which proposed, but the proposed access is on to both, and I don't agree that an interpretation can be reasonably made that your comp plan and your land development regulations contemplate or permit access of high-intensity commercial onto Lane Avenue, low-intensity commercial, but not high-intensity. If you do somehow interpret the site provisions to permit high-intensity commercial with access to Lane Avenue, then I'd like the council to consider what that means to the traffic pattern in the adjacent neighborhood. I know Planning and Zoning Commission approved a condition that right turns onto Lane Avenue from the site be restricted in some unspecified manner, although I'm not sure how that can be meaningfully accomplished, and although I think I'm the one that brought it up to begin with. So, can you stop?
Thank you very much, and we'll definitely at our next meeting have a very spirited discussion. Any other cards?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any comments of council? No? All right.
We are to the second petitions and requests.
Any petitions and requests?
You can speak again now.
It's open petitions and requests, so if anybody could speak about anything.
Particularly non-agenda items.
Non-agenda items.
Yeah.
Sorry. All right, seeing none, City Manager's report?
City Manager's report is as written, no, strictly information items, no action items for your consideration.
Awesome. Anything else we could order? Have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, and I've never heard Richard speak so quickly.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned.